Let's call the regular committee, the whole meeting for February 27th, 2017, two quarter. We have late items, please.
Thank you, Worship. This evening, our late items, we are adding for item 8A, the 10th senior fire plant, we're adding a delegation from Mr. Don Warner. For agenda item 13B, delegation not really to report to council, we're adding a delegation of Mr. Kevin Story. And just a note that this number was November as 12C on the addendum, so that was just an error. And agenda item 15, procedural motion, we're adding community charters, question 91A, K and the one for favor, which is G I. I'll get you the progress section in just one moment.
Thank you.
We're also adding rise in report of committee members. I'll be letting you know the committee appointments that were made. And Ms. Miller will be giving an update on public engagement.
Thank you very much. Counsel, have any additional? Thank you. I'd like, I've had a request that item number 13B, Diane Colby, to move to the front of the meeting. As a, as a short presentation, just to thank you, counsel. Uh, make sure they're in. Thank you. Counselor Kip.
Yes.
Seconded by Counselor Ford. Thank you. All's in favor? Polls, questions, carries? Motion to move the agenda as amended. Moved by Counselor Kip, seconded by Counselor Ford. Polls in favor? Polls, motion carries. Thank you. There's no minutes? So, can we do that presentation right now on the front page?
Okay.
Please.
Oh, up there?
Up there. We're not trying to intimidate or anything.
Well, you've done that, right?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Mayor McKay and members of council. My name is Diane Colby, and I'm a resident of Menaimo, living on Glen Oaks Drive. I'm here on behalf of the residents of our block on Glen Oaks Drive to thank you for allowing the park at 3760 Glen Oaks Drive to be named One Park. The reason for our request is a gentleman by the name of Will Wondell, who was a first resident in the block where he passed away on July 17th, last year, 2016. He was a remarkable man and a miss by all of them. He and his wife took a caring interest in all the neighbors around them. They were often in their yards as neighbors walked by and a conversation would loosely initiate. If we have a dog, if one had a dog, the dog receives treats that Will conveniently has in his pocket. We live two doors down from them and could watch the dog get into the Wondell driveway, looking for a pet and a treat. The dogs are still looking for him, as do we all, as we walk by his driveway. Will was always about if someone had some sort of project on the go and would wander over and see what was going on. He often had some solid words of advice that stood fit in what was happening. These words were always presented in a soft, gentle manner. In the first couple of years, when there were only a couple of homes on the block, Will and Marion kept an eye out for everyone and checked to see if people were okay during events like some. Some of the block residents did share their stories about this. Will was a superb craftsman of wood, and I do not think there is a neighbor who does not own something for several items he has made from sets of cutting boards, wood turned gold, bosses, pot plate holders, etc. He was very generous with giving away his work. He always knew where the wood came from and had some interesting facts to share about. He was, and his wife, Marion, is well-respected by all in our neighborhood. Will was a kind, considerate, and generous person. He would do anything for you if you asked and if it was in his power to do so. For these reasons, we are pleased we can honor him by naming the lot at 3760 Glen Oaks Drive after him. We would also like to thank the twill's council, the mayor, the Parks Department, and in particular, Richard Harding, Val Britton, and Rob Lauren for their time, support, and assistance in giving the job. So, right now, I'd just like to thank you, and I'm not sure if Arlene's here yet. Arlene Watts is Will's daughter, and she'd just like to say a couple of things. Thank you.
Hello to Mayor and Council, and my name is Arlene Watts, and I live in South Menaimo. I'm the third of four daughters of Will and Marion and Wondell. And on behalf of our family, and our mom is here, I'd like to thank you for approving the naming of Wondell Park at 3760 Glen Oaks. And I'd also like to thank my parents' neighbors in the Glen Oaks area for their love and friendship, nothing showing my parents over all that time. My dad came to Canada as an immigrant after the Second World War, and he met my mom in northern Easton, and together they grew a family and a very successful business in the north. And when Mom and Dad retired to Menaimo 18 years ago, they were one of the first to build on the new section of Glen Oaks. And this really was their home, and was the longest that they lived in any house. The opportunity to see the neighborhood grow and be a part of this extended family made their retirement years very fulfilling. My dad passed away in July of 2016, and it is a very humbling gesture that the neighbors honored my dad's memory by having the park in Glen Oaks named One Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Could we have a motion to receive the agenda? Moved by Counselor Pratt, seconded by Counselor Bestwick. All's in favor? Polls, questions, carries? Thank you. And you don't have to stick around if you don't want to. So, the next item is presentation by Mr. Richard Harding concerning a verbal update on hometown hockey festival.
Thank you, Worship. And I'm gonna do it real short tonight, 'cause I'd like to have the opportunity again in a week or so to do a broader presentation, just to be, just end of last night at 7:48 after the fireworks. And so, to do justice to the 10-day festival, if we can do a longer presentation, but additionally, just want to thank council for all the support for allowing us to do what we did and the community did. I think it exceeded all our expectations. The weather was great. Tracy says she was responsible for the weather, so she took care of that, and we took care of much of our things, and it was incredible. That from our perspective, staff's perspective, community's perspective. But again, do a longer presentation. There were so many events throughout the week that we want to visually be able to show the community and council, if we can do it in a few weeks, would be great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Counselor Ford.
Just out of curiosity, how much did that cost to submit to Menaimo? What was the cost for me and Rogers to submit to Menaimo? Just out of curiosity.
With the Rogers component, Rogers have done with their own, and the other items that we've added on, we could add, add a, a, a Zipline, doing the other event through sponsor, and, 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 the report, I did two reports to council prior, we actually completed the box. So, we kept within the budget, plus the information that are still coming in, and, 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 online.
Yeah, just curious, because there's a lot of online chatter about how much this cost us to give it to them. And personally, I think that benefit for the community is far exceeded the cost, but that's my opinion. And I, I really commend staff and council for best participation on this. I don't think I've seen a better event out there since Dragon Boat Festival.
Good job. Counselor Bestwick.
I wasn't gonna say anything, but now that the question has been presented, then I feel obligated as the organizing chair. The reason why that there isn't a fulsome and a wholesome report on revenues and expenses is because we've only had six daylight hours today in which to try to create the entire information you're asking for. We have a local organizing committee debriefing session tomorrow morning, and 19 board members. I trust that by the time we get to next Monday evening, we will have all of the information that everybody would like to have at their disposal to critique or compliment. And I also think that when you put into perspective the value of the promotional engagement across the country, which is priceless, and we will be getting back with how many minutes and how many mentions we had on Rogers, hometown hockey, and Sportsnet leading in and leading out, with the value attached to it, what it would cost if you were to try to buy that promotional activity. So, you will have all of that next Monday, unless Richard tells me that we're not gonna have all that next Monday.
Counselor Kip.
I just want to add into, it was phenomenal. I spent a pile of hours down at the weekend before this weekend. Over 2,000 people, we cracked the 2,000-person mark on Sunday on the Zipline. People had a wonderful time, no accidents on Zipline, nothing, no weird anything, I think a couple accidents on the arena, but that's typical ice. That's our game, it was phenomenal. It was really, uh, one of the best fireworks displays we've ever seen, and honestly, I am tape, or, I can't call it tape anymore, digitally recorded, and it's unbelievable the coverage we got. And if you talk, you talk, the dollar value across that, I had friends from Ontario contacting me, and there was a lot of guys up at the cross, and I went, wow, you know, and, and so that's, that's good. And I go along with Counselor Fuller, is the social value of that, the pride, social value, that's impressive. It was really impressive. Counselor Bestwick, I know a lot of lost a lot of sleep over the last weeks, but he did a good job, and I appreciate all of council's work and staff's work. It was excellent. I didn't see a nod, smiled on it. Only maybe one, no, but.
Thank you. Counselor Ford, followed by Ms. Sam.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I certainly just want to echo the acknowledgement and thanks to the organizing committee and our staff. Mr. Harding, excuse me. And I wanted to share, if I may, very quickly, an email I received today. I have a friend who used to work with Sportsnet and is personally acquainted with Ron McLean and Scott Moore, president of Sportsnet, and he passed along this note. He said, quote, "Even Scott Moore, president of Sportsnet and NHL properties, was a little overwhelmed by the setup and execution." In fact, he sent me an email last night to say, "Menaimo should be really proud of the job they did this week, and it was world-class." I think everyone would agree. Yeah, quote, so, high praise, and, uh...
Hey, good wrapping, good wrapping, Chief. Alex, Ms. Sam.
And I just, obviously, we're gonna do more next week, but I just have to say, very, very proud of how much work staff did, and I obviously thanks to the organizing committee, but everybody was out there doing their thing, rolling up their sleeves, pitching in, troubleshooting, and just everywhere, all week long. It was just fabulous to see that within staff, and so proud of our park and the beauty here. And it was just, it was wonderful, and when we highlight the feast that was hosted by SFN and before on that road, school board there, board authority, like all of our partners, cooker, people had tears in their eye, and it was joyous, and the dancing was wonderful, and it was just a great thing to do. We should all be very, very proud of our community and proud of what joy comes from working together and being together in a good way.
Motion to receive the report. Moved by Counselor Kip, seconded by Counselor Ford. All's in favor? Polls, questions, carries? Next item is under administration. First item is rise in report from Mrs. Curry on the committees.
Thank you, Worship. At the February 20th encounter council meeting, council approved the select committee chairs and member appointments. The applicants were then notified, and we would now like to rise in report to the public of select committee chairs and members. So, I'll just go through and review. For community planning and development, select committee, the chair is Counselor Kip, and the members, including council members, are Counselor Diane Brennan, Counselor Flores Fuller, Counselor Jerry Tong, Colin Brown, Daniel Appel, Richard Finnegan, Gail Adrian, Anthony Griffin, Kyle Wardstrom, Mercedes, Uzim Ball, Tricia Ryan, Richard Keel, and Tyler Brown. Okay. All right, yes, I'll just, I'll omit council members from the next committees, just because we didn't actually appoint those last night. So, committee, community vitality, the chair is Counselor Fuller, and the members are David Lemire, Dennis McMan, Anne Hammond, Ingrid Sky, Michelle Green, Paulo Watsonen, and Rob McGregor. Finance and audit, we didn't collect any members, it's just a, a committee of all the council. Menaimo Police Advisory, there is no chair, they could say collect their own. And the members are Akash Palar, Avery Bonner, Bree Tagg, Helen Lefkini, Claire Shuvi, Claudia Thompson, Erin Burney, Henry Watsonen, Michael Birbig, I'm so sorry to everybody who's listening, and I'm not pronouncing names right, I can't pronounce them, and Tal Campbell. Parks Recreation and Wellness Committee, the chair is Counselor Bestwick, and the members are Alex McPherson, Power Fuel, Maureen Young, Mark Fleen, and those are all members appointed from the, um, regional district of Menaimo. Then there's Calvin Tant, Carrie Chapl, Daniel LaFiber, Gabby Lent, Julia Bismann, Ken Knell, Marcia Downs, Robert Fraser, Tracy, Vander Mullen, and Trevor Heska. Public Safety Committee, the chair is Counselor Ford, and the members are Alexis Peterson, Bruce Parker, David Holmes, Rick Hines, Robert Whitman, and Thomas Meredith. For Public Works in Engineering, the chair is Counselor Hong, and the members are Wally Bell, Benaf Shah Dushidi, Fiona McGinnis, Leon Cake, Mike Donnelly, Mike Harold, Mike Leach, Russ Irish, and Will Milligan. And for Design Advisory Panel, their chair was already appointed, it's not a member of council, and they just added one new member, and it was Charles Pure, which is, yeah, he was the member appointed by the Design Advisory Panel. And that's it, your worship, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, motion to receive the presentation. Moved by Counselor Bestwick, seconded by Counselor Hong. All's in favor? Polls, questions, carries? Next one is a update on public engagement. Back to the defense.
Thank you, Worship. Just wanted to announce some information, date, and some other information for the community. On March 1st, from 6 to 8 o'clock at the Bed and Park Social Center Lounge, city staff will be doing another information center session. Then on March, Saturday, March 4th, from 12 to 4 at Luke Grove, city staff will be doing an information session. And then on March 7th, from 3 to 7 at the Vancouver Island University in the Royal Albert House Room, city staff will be doing its last information session. And then I wanted to alert the community to a new local television show from Shaw that's called Upfront with Annette Lucas, and she invited the city staff to do an interview on the event center. So, Ms. Fowler, Mr. Memma, and Mr. McCray, and I went down and taped an information Q&amp;A session with her. And starting on Wednesday, March 1st, at 5:00 AM, 11:00 AM, 5:00 PM, and 11:00 PM, the show will air, a half hour long, and then it will cycle through the week until the fall of Wednesday. And once we get that available, we'll do a link on our webpage so people can see that information. And then I'd also like to announce that the Chamber of Commerce has planned a debate on the event center, and they critically extended an invitation to the city, but because we need to remain neutral and not be advocating for or against the event center, we can't participate in that debate, that debate, but we are going to give them information packages and put something down on the table for the public that shows up. And I agree to let the people know that the doors open tomorrow night at 6:30, and the debate starts at 7:00 PM, and it is in the Vancouver Island Conference Center, Mount Bestin Ballmer. The next thing that I would like to update is just a public record correction. It was reported that the Northfield intersection, Bastion Bridge, Terminal Nickel corridor and, and would not be funded going forward, and I just want to draw the public's attention that Mayor and Council approved the 2017, 2021 financial plan, and in that, there's a carryport of 2.5, more than 2.5 million dollars to complete the Northfield intersection that 1.8 in 2017 has been allocated to the Bastion Bridge. The Terminal Nickel corridor work, we'll see work over four years in excess of 2.5 million dollars. And if people have that confused with Nickel Street, we imagine, you're right, that isn't funded because that is a provincial highway. Before anything can be done on that, the city and the province of British Columbia have to discuss ownership of the highway. So, that, that project was absolutely fantastic with the bike lanes and beautification of that area, but the reality is that the city doesn't know that it's a provincial highway. So, that, that does remain unfunded. It was also reported that there would be cuts to the RCP as a result of the event center. Again, that's also incorrect, but correcting the public record, there will be no cuts now or in the future to the RCP agreement for services and for cities. So, that's just a chance to correct the public record. The last item that I'll leave you with, and I think it's an important thing to do, is to talk about public discourse and some of the things that we've been experiencing as city staff and, and council receiving emails, is that it's been a, a sort of turn, and we're starting to receive very angry and sometimes racist and hateful emails. We thought, I, I know that a capital project can bring out passionate views, both for and against, and the community has different views on what's appropriate for the city of Menaimo and not, but there really is no room for this type of ugly rhetoric and discourse. So, I urge the community to please not call us. Some of the things that have been so serious, the RCP has come in and had to investigate some threats that are being made and some of the racist comments. So, I think since the city of Menaimo, we're capable of more, I think with the leadership of council, trying to raise that to quorum, you've been talking about raising that to quorum at our council meetings, and certainly as the city manager, when individuals do cross that line and do personalize attacks city staff, I'm certainly going to be speaking out on that and responding to those individuals. We are happy to meet with you, we're happy to provide you information, we have websites, we've done TV shows, we have handouts, so we're here to give you information. We are carrying out instructions from Mayor and Council to do the feasibility study and to do what it is necessary to inform the public so they can make an informed decision come March 11th. So, again, we have a few weeks coming up to March 11th, that's gonna be the day that the community can have their say. We urge everybody to go out and vote, and if you need information, please contact the city, we'll give you the information so that you can make an informed decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you agree more with respect to public discourse? Any questions? Counselor Alco.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Tracy. What do we do, like, at the, these open houses, like, we're having these open houses informing the public on the questions they may have, whether they like to answer or not, the staff is just doing the best they can with what they have, not to vote. What about when people have been super rude there, like, I was at the one in Harwood there the other day, and it was super ugly, coming from an unbelievable event with all the stakeholders in the city, and going there to, and there's, tell someone, yes or no, it's not my job, that's just what I view of it. And there's this one lady there, and where do we draw the line, like, sure, it's staff, but what about ourselves? I'm fine, I've been used to this crap my whole life, and people don't know it's been by a ratio, I don't hook it, but people think they go off. And that lady that you spoke with for half hour, it's absolutely disgusting. And, um, so, is there someone there, like, we can, you know what, and I don't want to say, have that person removed, 'cause it looks like I'm trying to posture, which I'm not. I've had run-ins with individual little black ladies in Menaimo. It's absolutely uncalled for. It's absolutely, like, there's a piece of Menaimo that wants to bare, show its head, its face, that the city fights with, 'cause still there alive and well in the city. It's absolutely appalling, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be as quiet as Wittenmore, I'm gonna say this Korean son, baby, I have a, um, Sonnemo daughter, and I'm by a ratio, so, it's not, and it's not about me, it's just about the city. It's not the name, oh, I want my two children raised, it's not the name, oh, I vision anyone. That's what I started touching on, like, last week, this ref, this event center is making people absolutely a little bit obsessed over it. I've never seen, and it's, um, sure, but though there's not crossed the line between that and the ignorance that we have to put out with. So, where do I draw the line without view as this, that, I can just imagine all the brave people behind their keyboards that they call me when asking if this lady removed, with their stories and their interpretation of BS. So, that's why I put that out there. I, I want to make sure myself, or, did you ever get a first date, this person come to this event? No? No? And they have rights too, even though there's, there's a portion of the city that don't want to even have a voice. Anyway, I throw that out there, 'cause it's actually, it's appalling.
My response, it's two-part, it's incredible response to one, but what we've been saying and pretty out of the quorum is that the staff's worked, like, yeah, be mean, be on the computer, on emails, and at the sessions. So, the law of the British Columbia and Canada requires that there be respectful discourse and conduct. If somebody is not respecting those grounders, then staff will take appropriate action to ensure that the rest of staff aren't being objected to that. We've got some measures in place that we've been using at these to, to deal with, you know, when people get a little bit more passionate, it's understandable, but it does, it does rise to tenor where safety and well-being and violations of the Community Rights Code are being made, then, then steps must be taken. Ms. McCray?
Oh, Mayor Worship. Several measures have been in protocol for staff, for members of council, and also for other residents attending the event. First piece is, part of my role is to make sure that I attend every staff member, like, every 15 minutes, to ensure that they're okay, they're having no issues. My second piece is to make sure that I'm touching base with members of council to see if they need it, if they're having any insurance troubles. Two instances, that was brought to my attention, the information was provided to me, and the person who was causing an issue was asked to be filled. The, uh, Ms. Sam was very correct, we, we need to be able to have a place for everybody safe, regardless of what side of the fence you're on. It is no place for racist, sexist, homophobic remarks. You're, you're to present the facts, and that is all part of my role, is to ensure that everybody in that facility is able to be safe, which is why I work in conjunction with the, uh, security agency to provide that outdoor safety as well for residents.
Thank you. I have a question on public engagement, I was looking for something today, I'm not sure if you can answer the question yet or not, and that is, normally during an election or during a voting period, we have a, we have something set up down at Shaw, Victoria, sort of an election central, if you want to call it that. Is, where are, how are we going to get the message out with respect to results as they're coming in while the election is on?
We're going to be doing that out of the department, the boardroom.
Is there a way of getting that on our website so that media is aware of it? Thank you. Any other questions? If you have those.
Oh, yeah, yes, Worship, I was just going to let you know that, um, just like an election preliminary results, if they come in, I think we'll be posted on our website and up high chart, so, showing the, yes, on the note side, and it'll be updated as they're announced, as the preliminary results are, are officially announced, and they'll just, the preliminary results. And they will be out by then.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, motion to receive the presentation. So, moved by Counselor Bestwick, seconded by Counselor Ford. All's in favor? So, Lou by Council District, second by Council House, all is fair. Next item is number 8E, 10 to 15 year fire plan.
Thanks very much for this opportunity to present to you on the proposed 10 to 15 year fire plan. I don't think the microphone is on. No. I don't think the microphone was on before. No. Hello? Hello? Let me see, staffs, let's take a turn. Is that better? Can you hear me now? Perfect. I can hear myself, so that's a good thing. So again, thanks very much for the opportunity to present on the proposed 10 to 15 year fire plan. It's quite a lengthy package was presented in your council package with some attachments. I'm going to go over the main key points of the new proposed fire plan and then look forward to having your questions afterwards. One of the things I think that would be worthwhile, given that it's been some time since we've talked about the fire plan, would be to spend a few minutes and go through some background and just revisit some of the context of why we're here and how we got here. So a few things that I would like to talk about is three specific council directives that really guided staff through the development of this proposed new fire plan. We'll touch briefly, I think, just to recap on the previous 10 year fire plan. And obviously, we'll have a look at the newly proposed fire plan, which is presented for you here tonight, which includes several shorter three-year service delivery plans, which is intended to allow council and staff to be more responsive to current needs of the time when, rather than having a long plan that has prescriptive capital and operating expenditures tied to it. We'll have a look at the recommendations in the report. We'll talk about the budget implications and then we'll review some of the options in the report that are there for council's review. So the first staff directive was to eliminate Station 6 from the financial plan. And that was done in October 2015. And the action that staff's taking on that is that we're not requesting any additional resources at this point in time. For this first three-year service delivery plan, we heard council say that they didn't want to build that station. We're not recommending it at this point in time, but we know that probably future three-year service delivery plans will require resourcing and you'll start to see some of the numbers as we move forward through the presentation. The next council directive, motion to staff, was to implement a policy requiring all fire rescue department engines to be staffed with a minimum of four personnel. And if you recall back to 2012 or 13, council allotted some overtime funding on a temporary basis to achieve four-member engine staffing. Staff then the following year were able to continue on with that four-member engine staffing policy. And then in 2015, council directed staff to implement that as a policy, which we've Preparing a new 10 to 15 year fire plan, that was the, one of the final directives from staff after the core services review, and that's why we're here tonight to talk to you about that. So quickly, just to recap of the old fire plan from 2005. The old fire plan was intended to meet two response performance metrics, and those are the two at the bottom, to have our first unit arrive within six minutes 90% of the time. And then the second response performance metric was to have the full assignment of units, if we're having multiple units responding to an incident, that they would be on scene within 10 minutes 90% of the time. The equation at that time was that if we add resources, we'll work towards achieving those response performance targets, which are industry recognized as best practices. The resources that were to be added were four assistant chiefs, building and staffing Fire Station 4 in the Cranberry area with 20 new firefighters. Those two were achieved. Hammond Bay Fire Station was deferred several times, beginning in 2012, until it was ultimately eliminated on the budget in 2015. Thank you.
Is it the red one?
Here.
Low battery, it says.
Yep.
Hey, will it continue or will it start? Always got to put new batteries. Every day, whatever. Just tell the fire to wait. Like, better cut the wire? No. People triple.
If I talk loud enough like that, can everybody hear me? Sound loud enough? Okay. So again, the resourcing that was intended with the old fire plan was to reach those performance targets. And I'll talk in a few minutes about how we're doing along those performance targets. But one of the things that the old fire plan didn't have was an element of prevention. So in conjunction with responding within a timely fashion to these three standards, attempts to try and reduce incidents and harm those incidents caused wasn't a part of the old fire plan. And it is integrated into this, the new fire plan that we'll see. The good news on the performance metrics is that on the second one, the full assignment of units within 10 minutes 90% of the time, we're achieving that right now. So that's a good thing. And you'll see on the next slide here where we are at with the six-minute response. And I just want to recap for council how we, how those six minutes are made up. We have allowing one minute for the dispatchers to get to call for the caller and then assign the appropriate resources and alert firefighters in the station. Once the firefighters are alerted in the station, they have another minute to prepare themselves, assemble at the apparatus, get to travel to the incident. And then the third element is a four-minute travel time element. So that's how we arrive at six minutes. One minute for dispatch, one minute for firefighters to turn out, and four minutes travel time. So you can see, looking back to 2005, when the fire plan was initially established, we were meeting just six minutes, first arrival, unit, first unit arrival, about 63% of the time. And gradually, you can see a steady increase. Certainly, the resourcing that was added from the old 10 year fire plan certainly helped. But you can see now that we've peaked off at around 80, 81%. So the question that's more, I think, the planning group, the council group perhaps in the future. So the question that will be before us in the future is how do we get from 81 to 90? How do we close that 9% gap that exists? And what we found when we set out as the fire planning group is that those incidents that make up that remaining 9% are distributed amongst four areas in the city. This map, I think, council has seen before with updated numbers. And you can see here's the, that's the shoreline, and then here's the city boundary. And what we set out to do with the fire planning group was to look at where those incidents are that we're actually able to respond to within our six-minute target. And we found, the good news is that each one of the fire trucks in the blue area represents a fire station with a four-minute travel time around it. So the areas where we should be able to make that 90th percentile were pretty close. For example, Station 1, in the 2013 to 15 numbers that were assessed, we are making that 89.93% of the time. Okay? Hammond Bay area, for example, on the other end, we were only making it 33% of the time. However, again, you can see a lower call volume in that area. Station 3, we're making it 85% of the time. So really, what this speaks to, once we see where all the, the majority of the incidents are occurring in the staffed areas, we have Hammond Bay, Jingle Pot, Westwood, and Duke Point, all the incidents are occurring in those areas. So staffing one of them or staffing all of them are really the options that are before us. Which one should we staff? And I think that's where, when we come back, probably in next service delivery plans and start to ask for resources, perhaps one of those areas will emerge with some development that will cause us to say that's the area that we need to provide staffing in. Council, I think, has also seen this integrated risk management model. And I think there has been some confusion in the past that it means something else. You recall several years ago, there was a proposal to have smaller engine sizes with fewer staff, but presented in conjunction with that was an integrated risk management model. The smaller unit size is called convergence, and that's where multiple smaller units would converge to an area. We're not proposing that or any changes to our existing staffing model based on council's direction to staff with four-member engines. But the integrated risk management does exactly that. It integrates the response aspects and prevention aspects to enhance public safety. So for example, the old fire plan had only step one, risk assessment, and step three, response models. The new fire plan moving forward is going to contain all three elements of that to hopefully enhance the service that we can deliver to the customer. You'll see this in your, in your package on page 12. I see most of you have it out on your table. This is really the framework for the fire plan, which is essentially a process. We're looking at developing broad goals at the, at the, at the top of this flow chart and then breaking it into three-year service delivery models, which would have major revisions and evaluations along the way, therefore allowing council and public safety committee and staff to have a look at what's happening right at that time, rather than us saying we're going to staff this area in this year, we're going to build that fire station in that year, and have a long plan that this council sets that future councils then are implementing. And I think that's one of the challenges that this council and previous councils had with the old fire plan, is they weren't there to make those decisions on the long-term staffing. And it was difficult for them to grapple with that in, with, given the fiscal times and budget constraints. So I think what we're proposing here is a fire planning process that works more closely with council on, more within the timeframes of when resources or other initiatives might actually be needed. The broad goals that we came up with for this 10 to 15 year fire plan were to reduce the frequency and harm of our highest-risk incidents. So we're obviously going to start at the incidents that have the highest risk and begin to establish some prevention measures for those. We're looking at an all-hazards approach to fire prevention. We respond to more than just fires. So we feel that it's in the best interest of the community if we engage in some public education and prevention initiatives in those other incident types that we respond to. Maximize the value of our existing resources for prevention. So that's our existing firefighters engaging in these types of fire prevention activities. Seeking advanced mitigation partnerships. So there may be other community groups that could assist us with some of these prevention initiatives. It could be, for example, home care nurses pushing smoke alarm buttons to make sure that they're functioning. And if they're not notifying us, then we can come and rectify that situation. And then, of course, using the public safety committee. Response goals, what we're saying for the goals for response over the next 10 to 15 years is we still want to maintain that 90th percentile response performance for multiple units. But in the next 10 to 15 years, we want to achieve that 90th percentile for our first unit. Remember, we were at 81% now. We want to, over the next 10 to 15 years, try and close that gap. And that's the broad goal. So that will mean at some point in time, additional resourcing. It's just a question of where those would be. Oops. So that brings us to the first three-year service delivery plan, where we felt that it was appropriate that we took some chunks of three initiatives that we felt would be, that we'd be able to accomplish. And those three initiatives are target reduction and structure fire where it's high-frequency areas. So we know that structure fires are not occurring evenly distributed throughout the city. The majority of the structure fires are occurring actually in the downtown area. And we know that there's clusters even within the downtown area that have a higher frequency of structure fire. And actually, as Mayor McKay alluded last year, or sorry, last week at the council meeting, we also know that there's a lower percentage of functioning smoke alarms, and I'll talk about that on the next slide. So the next one was to improve survivability rates for cardiac arrests. And I think there's some people in the room that, that have experienced that themselves and understand what that's about. A large number of our incidents that we're attending are medical, and we know that we can certainly have an impact if people are trained in bystander CPR. It's one of the most critical elements. Improve public preparedness for disasters. We've got an emergency program that has a public education element, and we've also got firefighters that are able to be part of the delivery of those programs. And again, on the resourcing side, we're not looking for any resources at this time, although that's very likely to be coming to you in the next few years. So again, just to recap the objectives on the structure fire, as Mayor McKay had mentioned last week, whenever there's a structure fire, our investigators will have a look at whether or not a smoke alarm was present. And then they'll also try and ascertain as to whether or not that smoke alarm actually functioned. And what we found is that throughout the city, when we respond to a structured fire, 54% of the time, there is a smoke alarm present. That doesn't mean 54% of all homes in Menaimo have smoke alarms. That just means when we've had a fire, of those homes where there's been a fire, 54% of the time, we find a smoke alarm. Only 27% of those, of the time, are those smoke alarms actually functioning. So dead batteries, things of that nature, or malfunctioning. In certain cluster areas in the downtown area, those numbers are a lot lower. Functioning smoke alarm, 18%. So we know that, that we could probably do better in that downtown area. And the challenge that we've, that we're faced with is 76% of our fires are actually occurring in residential dwellings, not commercial buildings and retail and those types of buildings that are, we're required to actually inspect under the Fire Services Act. So fewer fires are taking place in the assembly and the larger buildings because they're undergoing a regular inspection process. But the Fire Services Act doesn't allow us the ability to make entry into private dwellings to do, to do inspections and safety inspections. So what a lot of jurisdictions throughout the world have started to do is try and find a way to do that with compliance. Try and find a way to get that customer to say, yeah, I'd like you to come into my house and check my smoke alarm and have a look at other fire safety things in my house. And we've actually implemented that in the last year. I think I've sent some updates to council after some significant fires where I think I've sent some updates to council after some significant fires where we've done what we call an after-the-fire program. And we'll take a one-block radius around where the fire was and we will actually go door-to-door, provide some information on the, the fire that occurred in the neighborhood, and give those folks an opportunity to have us come in and check their smoke alarm. We're installing a smoke alarm when that happens. And so we, we received some very good feedback from both the customers and from our firefighters going out and doing this. So we, we know when we implement this in some of those higher-risk areas, that, that will probably be a lot more successful. It's also important to note that the previous philosophy on, on public education and the fire service has been everything broad-brushed. Let's just go everywhere. We'll send pamphlets out and mail stuff out everywhere. One of the differences with this new fire plan process is it's going to be evidence-based and we're going to look for where the problem is and where it's the biggest and try and, and try and hit it hard where it exists. Not, not to say that we're not going to continue with a lot of the broader fire prevention and public education programs we have. They're successful. But to find those higher, higher-risk areas and use a risk-focused approach. So that's the, the objective under high-frequency structure fires. On the bystander CPR, we know that the, the best response when someone's experienced a cardiac arrest is if it's witnessed and there's somebody there to begin CPR immediately and call 911, and that we have a layered response with first responders, ambulance paramedics, and that the person gets to the hospital as quickly as possible. What we found is that oftentimes people will have first aid or CPR skills, but there's also a reluctance for them to engage for fear of their own safety or for whatever reason. So there, there, there really is a reluctance for people to actually begin CPR. So our, our initiative will be to not only teach CPR, but find ways to encourage people that already know CPR, to provide them some information so that they feel more comfortable to, to actually engage when that happens. Another piece is to track and, and provide support for, for people who have been involved in, in one of these incidents. We've had some city staff people in the last little while that have engaged in a rescue with CPR and community AEDs. Those people need some support afterwards. Quite often, the people don't even know whether or not the person that they intervened with had survived or not. So we need to try and build in some, some ways to deal with that. And perhaps maybe they need some help to deal with the traumatic incident afterwards themselves. So that's another piece. We also feel it's important that we should lead by example, and our, our goal will be to offer basic bystander CPR to, to anybody in the city that wants it, city staff, and then also out into the public. And I should just clarify bystander CPR, it's also, can be known as compression-only CPR, as I think the mouth-to-mouth aspect of CPR is quite often what, what causes people not to intervene in a certain situation. And the studies show that it's virtually as effective, compression-only CPR is virtually as effective as, as full CPR that people would be certified for. We know that the, the province has done some research on cardiac arrest incidents throughout BC, and Nanaimo is right in, in the median. About 14% is your, is your chance if you, if you have a witnessed cardiac arrest. You have about a 14% chance in, in Nanaimo as well as most other places in the province. There are other places that have much higher survival rates. For example, a friend of mine is a, a safety person at the Boeing Plant in, in Redmond, Washington. 90% chance if you have a witnessed cardiac arrest at that facility because they have a fire department and medics, 90%. So that gives you an idea of where the range is and how much room there is for us to, to increase those numbers in, in Nanaimo. Not that we would hit 90, but certainly there's probably room for us to do better. Disaster, and, and major disaster and earthquake preparedness. Again, as I said, the emergency program is delivering its neighborhood community education programs. We're using the provincial and, and federal government brochures. But there's one person in that division, and I think in, in a major disaster, fire rescue would be the people who would respond. And I think it's important that we would be part of assisting people and being prepared. Not only will more people survive and will more people be able to survive the first few days on their own, if we can achieve that, it will also reduce the, the, the demand on first responders in those first few days after a disaster if more people are prepared. So there's kind of both, both aspects of that initiative. So the recommendations that are in the report, the staff report on, on page nine, were basically saying, asking staff, or asking council to approve the 10- to 15-year fire plan process. That's the flow chart. Direct us to implement the first three-year service delivery plan, which includes the objectives that I had just gone through. And direct staff to engage the Public Safety Committee in further measuring, analyzing, and developing future three-year service delivery plans. Just about done. Budget implications, we're estimating about $100,000 for this three-year service delivery plan. That's going to include educational material, perhaps some iPads and things of that nature. So certainly not, not a very big cost to, to hopefully have a huge impact on some prevention Options, that, these are also in the, in the staff report. Council can approve all the recommendations. You can not approve them, or you can approve some, or give us some other direction that you'd like. So with that, we're into questions.
Just before we go to questions, I want to take this opportunity to compliment our fire chief, our chief's operations officer. What you have for you represents a year's worth of work, careful engagement with stakeholders, and really I think it's a good example of innovation and new leadership that we're seeing within our city staff team. And I, for one, am very impressed with the analysis and the recommendations that are coming forward. I think it shows, it's just a great, a great report and the recommendations that I go to support them at, once again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Questions? Counselor Best, or Counselor Kip?
Thank you. My, sorry, chief, sorry. Over the years, I, I don't know.
Where to sit? Do you want me to sit?
Over the years, over the years, I've asked about the six-minute response time. It's, as I understand, it's not a legislated or mandated time. It's an arbitrary number that we try to reach for lack of reasons and, and all of those. So that is still the case. It's not a mandated time by the higher government.
So the, the six-minute response performance target comes from National Fire Protection Association standards, NFPA standards. Those are consensus standards, so there, there is no requirement to adopt that particular one. Some NFPA standards are embedded in works APC regulations and we're required to follow those. But I, the NFPA 1710 is, which is the standard that this comes from, is, has been widely accepted as the, as a best practice. But no, certainly it's not something that we are bound to, to achieve.
Thank you. I follow it. Over the years, I've also, and, Mr. Lindsey, so I've often asked for questions that in certain sized buildings or, or a certain description of buildings, fire sprinklers are mandatory. And we all understand the costs of a new station in the neighborhood, develop property at two and a half million dollars or thereabouts, and staffing at about $2 million a year or thereabouts. And equipment and so on and so forth on a localized basis. So I often wonder why we, and I've been told that the Canadian Home Builders Association, whatever the importance to it, which I don't understand why, but, so if we get outside of that six-minute radius or that six-minute flight, uh, distance, why the city of Nanaimo or any city couldn't say, if you are going to build outside of this line, we strongly encourage you to put in a sprinkler system in your garage and kitchen, which I understand to be the two most prominent places where fires at homes start. For a cost, as I'm told by the construction industry, would probably be around six, seven grand per home. I didn't research whether that was the case or not, but that's what the industry has told me. So when we're putting sprinkler systems in our front and backyards or otherwise that are costing at least that amount of money, it seems to me that it might be a education and an incentive that we can incentivize residential owners to do such somehow, some way, just like low-flowing toilets or whatever we're doing to preserve water as well in a time and age where sprinkling grass in the backyards and front yards and sending people out to see if they're actually following the rule or not following the rule, bylaws are out there, et cetera, et cetera. This week, we just received an email from a gentleman that said, what are you guys doing with this, these projects when we're running out of water and this reservoir's not big enough and we're talking about giving landscape water? What are we doing? So my, my question, and I still don't understand why outside of that six-minute radius, for existing or new builds, R S ones with suites or granny houses or duplexes or whatever, why we can't say, in the city of Nanaimo, we have a rule, a bylaw, or whatever the hell is, that you're putting a sprinkler system in the kitchen and your garage, and here's the benefits for doing it. So I don't know why we can't do that. And I don't know why we shouldn't consider that because it's not in, it's not in any of our reports. It's 2005, and here we are in 2017.
So we do presently have a sprinkler bylaw, although the building code is in transition right now, and perhaps, Mr. Lindsey, you'd like to speak to the transition in the building code, which is where the sprinkler bylaw is enabled presently?
And I think to start with, this is part of a larger discussion that we need to have with council because of the changes that are happening provincially. So as the, as the chief mentions, we do have longstanding sprinkler bylaw in the community, which basically requires every building with three or more units, all commercial buildings, to have sprinklers. That is not a BC building code requirement. Our bylaw is way above the building code. We've had that in place for many years. The work that the province is doing under their modernization of, of building regulations is actually to repeal all building models in the province and have a standardized building code across the province. That's the ball that, that implementation comes in. There's been a lot of work done by UDCM, the fire, fire chiefs of BC, working with the province, trying to look at an alternative to that. So there's potential for, we're hearing potential for a regulation that would allow communities to opt into some sort of fire, a sprinkler bylaw, sorry. But at this point, we do not yet have, have the details on that. But it is something, given the timeframe, the province is putting in, is something we need to have in schedule with council this year.
All of this is that?
This is a call meeting, right? Where we can have a conversation about?
Go ahead. Thank you. So the sprinkler bylaw that may or may not come into 2017 discussions or considerations, to me, with our density and our bonus density and small lot creations, although we may not be three units to hit the threshold or trigger the requirement to put in sprinkler systems, with the distance now in small lots and the density and all, you might as well be connected. So I don't know how old our sprinkler bylaw is, but back in the day, we used to be on large lots, half-acre lots, third-acre lots, quarter-acre lots. Now we're putting four houses on these things, six houses, steep slopes, can't get there, windy roads, narrow parking on the streets. So for me, this is a significant topic about how we administer three units one way on the same-sized lot that we might have two units. That to me, it, it just doesn't make sense to me anymore. And I don't know how old our sprinkler bylaw is, and if we're going to wait till the province does something, God forbid, who knows? Like, I don't know when they're, if we make anything, I don't, I don't know if anybody at this table does. But I think that we should be progressive, and I think that we should be more interested in protecting people's properties and lives, including our firefighters.
Thank you. About Mr. Fowler and Mr. Lindsey.
Just to make help, Mr. Gail is right about in terms that there are changes going forward, so a lot of it, if you're to put in those proposals right now, they may change the province, essentially prohibiting any changes. You can't do anything that's over and above the building code, so that's the current status. Municipalities I've worked for, almost all of them, they're this size and bigger, have had sprinkler bylaws for both single-family dwellings and multi-family residential. So all the other places, by, by, you know, sprinklers everywhere. They significantly reduce the fire risk and the needed fire response to that. So us, we're in the, in the, never land in the moment with the province saying they didn't block all those different regulations from all places in different municipalities and want to set one standard. Or they may, or they, you know, they may come out and say you can set your own standards, but we're not really clear in terms of what standard we're at the moment. But sprinklers do save lives, there's no argument about that. You do get a response from buildings, associations, and development associations, and that adds cost to buildings. I think a single-family dwelling was about $1,500, $1,700, and maybe more now to add that on to them, but as I said, that reduces fire and life safety risks. So it's balancing that there, so it's all those steps from associations as well. So yeah, it reduces significantly the risk, but we're going to have to, I think, weigh this, Mr. Lindsey wants to add something else to that.
Your worship, just about covered all. The thing I wanted to stress is the fact that our concern right now, and one that we've been working through, UDCM, is this losing ground concern where we have a bylaw in place that requires sprinklers in many more building types and the code requires. If you simply go back to BC building code, you'd be seeing a number of buildings that are constructed, meaning that we've no longer require. As you were mentioning, we're still waiting here from the province about what options. They may allow communities to opt in. It could be, the ability to create their own bylaw, I suspect, is probably more likely, the ability to opt in to a certain regulation that they will draft, like they've done with solar, solar, solar.
Counselor Kip?
So I'd like to make those recommendations, that staff will come back with an update for council. I think this is a serious matter that needs for good discussion. Right now, we're dealing with the fire plan, but it's certainly understanding rationale for provincial government taking the steps that they are. Totally concur with you, Lindsey, and Fowler, and Congress about that. So we can come back with something, obviously put this on my radar, and something that we're going to need to work on going forward.
That's okay. Thank you. You talked about some action about post-core review for the fire department, you didn't go through the core review, did it?
No, no.
So we have to do core review on the fire department, but I noticed in the report you said something about core review. Collaborative, you talked on page 16 in the report about being collaborative, but did you, in this plan, did you include public works? Did you include BC ambulance or EHS talk? Because, I mean, right now, 1.5% of our calls over the years are structure fires. 2.4% are other fires. And it says collaborative, but I, like I say, I don't see, like, when you do so many calls on medical aid, I know it's a competing union and combative union stuff that goes on between IAF and BC ambulance guys, I know that, but you've talked. on between I A F and B C ambulance guys, I know that, that you've talked, and how much input the E H S and B C M has had into this type of assessment. Do you want to go one question in fact, or do I got two?
So we're, we're an ongoing collaboration with, with B C ambulance and, and R C M P on a daily basis?
No, I'm talking about in this plan. Did you sit on that?
For this plan, they weren't specifically consulted in the...
Okay, thank you, and answer your question on that. Education-wise, firefighters going out to educate, and I know we have the V I U system going with our education program, how, how successful are we? Aren't these, I mean, the uniforms gray, need to see a guy out there, firefighter, put their uniforms on and that, but are they the most efficient educators that we have? And I look at that as a concern to me, because they're not, they're not educator-based. So is that, is that an efficient use of resources that are, in this plan, it says an efficient source of resource, is that true? How have you managed or manifest that?
Well, I, I think what I would say is there is a, a available workload for firefighters to be doing some of this work, that, that is indeed important work to be done in the community, and they have the knowledge and skills around emergency response.
But would they be called in, if they may, do they be called in? Because if you're on shift, and you're in the middle of a presentation, poof, you gotta go, and that's not great education. Oh, we'll leave you the video and offer, no, we'll leave you the pusher and offer gone. That, that's a concern to me, when you have an operational emergency response organizer going up to do education. So did that get answered in your, in the report?
The majority of the, of the preventions programs that we'll be doing will be in short hits, ten to fifteen minutes. We also have our fire prevention division that engages in some of the larger programs, and there may be some, some need for, for people to be called in off duty to do some of the larger programs, but for the majority, the messages are very short and quick, and mostly ad hoc.
Okay, so, and a follow-up on that, how many community workshops did the emergency coordinator do in the last year?
I don't have those numbers with me, but I can certainly get them for you.
I've asked for them before, I appreciate it. When you say one person, that's a bit tough, because that one person has the fire department and all of the other people around too, so isolating you for one person. And for me, this is, it's a fire plan, and it's really based on two or three percent of our stuff, but the loss is important, and you can see millions of dollars of loss in the downtown core. Regarding sprinklers, I think they're important. We currently did new seismic upgrades to the, to the code with wall bands and wall panels, and it's harder to do, and it's more expensive, but it's important. Another one on call-out time, you have, you talked about call-out time, is that from the nine-one-one startup, or is it from handoff, where your, where your six-minute start?
Dispatch time starts at the moment our dispatchers receive the call, which in many cases will come from R C M P or from B C ambulance, and sometimes direct.
And how, do you have any statistical information on how slow the handoffs have been? Because I know when I've been around, they've been slow, sometimes the handoffs, so, and that's that combative union stuff that I hear about, and I heard it's getting better, so...
To my knowledge, there are no delays in, in the handoffs from, from other agencies when they're processing the call, they have a prescriptive, for, for example, B C ambulance has a prescriptive flow chart of questioning that they go through, and there's certain triggers that say first responders should be alerted, and then they're alerted at that time.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's, yeah, a concern with the educational components, the number of workshops we're doing, the collaborative effort to put a risk assessment together, and I guess from my perspective, this is a fire plan that falls short on all hazard risks. Counselor Yocum.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Richardson. Question, two questions. First question I have is, in regard for the plan there, is there a budget for, I would go to some advice, for wellness? So I'm concerned about P T S D, I haven't read quite a bit about this, and frontline service providers are facing that quite often, so I'm looking to see if there's a budget for wellness, and that, I assume that would be in there?
So presently, we have a small budget that we're working with a consultant on, with our critical incidents stress team, and we've been working collaboratively with, with the union as well, who's, who's present here tonight, and our O H and S committee, because we, indeed, we agree, it's, it's, it's a similar message as, as what we're seeing in the fire plan, is that some prevention upfront, and some wellness initiatives will certainly help to, to work towards a healthier workplace.
So I share, I feel that exact same common concern with your colleagues from the R C M P as well, because I believe we have responsibility here as collectively to make sure we get caught up in budget for this and that, but that's a conflict, it gets sometimes on the wayside, in many frontline, in my line of work, it's good social work, and so I look forward to you making sure you support and asking for wellness. Comment on the sprinklers, I think it's, I don't know the provincial rules you guys were talking about, but, but I do know is, I have two group, two group homes, and they're just basic four or five-bedroom homes, like, if any residential thing they've ever been in, by law, we have to have a sprinkler in there, and they're for, for the children, I mean, children need to stay in our group homes, so. And it's money spent, but it's money, obviously, it brings security, and so I look forward to being progressive on that matter, and it's not undoable, we do it all in our group homes. And in my final comments, if I may, we personally witnessed the good work of yourself and the crew of Mr. Rispin and his people he represents, with my commercial building, which here went down, flames with sprinklers and crawls, they saved it, but also the quick timing, the work you guys did in our eight, our ten thousand square foot building. And then, just recently, on the weekend, I don't want to minimize the, the data, I used to be one of those individuals that said, "Oh, what are firefighters doing at the scene that's so-and-so jurisdiction?" I witnessed this weekend, I gave a motion, because I can't believe what I seen, as an individual, I don't know what was going on in my business, but individual laying there, looking up, and you guys are first on the scene, and one was a gentleman out in the back there, and the sky was pretty much out, like, gone, I'd seen the paddles, and I'd come, oh, guys, you guys were there, headed ambulance and R C M P, and just went out with the whole thing, I shouldn't have been watching, but I was watching, and it was unbelievable, watching Chad and his crew go to work there and save that individual's life. And it was just like, oh my God, it's, it was like reality, waking up Chad, though, like, you guys do this theory, but it was, in this case, it was a positive outcome, and it stoned me off a bit from what I witnessed, and that young father with three kids, could get another chance to be nice, and this play, so on, so I just wanted to share that, so my two examples of the good work you guys do, one from a fire, and one from the, from the paddles coming out. So much for that, thank you.
Thank you for the comment.
Counselor Hall.
Thank you. Just move the staff recommendations, we can, we do that first.
No, we've got a delegation.
Oh, delegation, so after, okay. Well, then I'll ask a question with regards to, I guess it's gonna go to Mr. Lindsay as well, Mr. Richardson. Last week, you presented to us on the growth of Nanaimo, Mr. Lindsay, and we're at eight percent growth, and there were certain areas that were growing faster than others. So when we talked about having that fire station at Hammond Bay, it didn't seem like that that area was growing as fast as Westwood was, or some other areas of, of the city. So are we expecting a slower growth rate in the Hammond Bay area where a fire station is needed? It's gonna grow slower, as opposed to the Westwood area in the upcoming years, what I wanted to ask you, Mr. Lindsay? No, but I'm just saying...
My only comment on that would be, the Westwood area continues to be part of your O C P, your urban reserve, which anticipates over the very long term that there'd be comprehensive planning and further infill in the neighborhood program. At the twenty-two, you see infill in Hammond.
If I could just add to that, the growth that, that we're seeing is fairly consistent with the growth that Mr. Lindsay reported last week in all areas. However, an area that's emerging with, with growth is actually downtown, in terms of our incident workload, and we're actually seeing peak, peak volumes there for our crews that are in that area.
So one of the benefits of having the stage every three years, looking at where we're at, gives council the flexibility to deal with changes of, of growth within the community, so it makes a lot of sense. I think I'd also add that we've seen from the scrutiny of our budget, that we certainly have capacity to build two, three, or four fire malls, I'm not advocating for it, but we certainly, if need be, the city is able to trust any type of capital investment for fire within our community, that's not the issue.
Counselor Ford, or, or Yocum?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chief Richardson, appreciate the information. What I liked about this report is, is the format that you're combining a longer-term sort of vision, planning the ten-year outlook, with smaller bite-sized chunks, as Ms. Sammer just said, allowing flexibility for, for trends, or, or needs as we see them develop. So I think that's an excellent format. I personally really like the proactive things that you highlighted in your report, I think the education's important, and I certainly, I, from what I've seen, I think it is effective. Getting back to the shorter term, and sort of following, following up on Counselor Long's question, eventually, down the road somewhere, there'll be another fire hall built in one area of the city, but as you just indicated, right now, the majority of the fires are happening in the downtown area. And I'm assuming that in one of our three-year reviews, we'll be looking at the replacement or something to do with fire hall number one, and I'm just wondering how far away you think that might be in the books.
So with respect to the actual building, fire station number one, there is currently a consultant preparing a study at, at council's direction, and we hope to have the results from that probably within a month or so, and be able to bring those in front of council with some options. But in terms of managing workload downtown, I think that is one of the things that, that we are seeing a, a growth. We have to be cognizant of the fact that in order for us to achieve a ninetieth percentile response time, that means that the crews can't be committed to incidents more than ten percent of the time, because if they're committed more than ten percent of the time, they're unable to respond and meet that ninetieth percentile. And so that, that's called unit utilization, and our crew at station one is very near, if not above, that ten percent of unit utilization in, in this last, last six to twelve months. So whether that trend continues, that might be something that we'll look at in the next service delivery plan, as to whether or not that's a place where we need to direct some resources.
Right, thank you. Counselor Pratt.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, I'm, I'm very encouraged by it, I really do like breaking it up into pieces and, and being able to revisit. I think that's a much better way to approach problems, and looking at such a large expanse of time, especially when council's, I think, is reporting years at a time. My question is around the four-man engines, and I just, I know you're committed to that, that's what it says in your report, have you had any trouble with meeting that all the time, or is there, are there times when that doesn't get met?
It's met one hundred percent of the time, as a result of council's, council's direction. I, I don't have an analysis of the overtime, although I know that's what we're using to fill those spots, and council will remember, three or four years ago, when initially putting in the, the overtime, we were, we would have been about ninety-five percent of the time achieving four-person engines, and there was some overtime to close that gap. That gap fluctuates, anyway, I, I think presently, it's in the eighties, so, but we're filling the gap between eighty-ish percent and a hundred with, with overtime, and so far, it's within budget.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and again, I would just like to say thank you for everything that you're doing. I was so impressed when I visited the site downtown after the fire, had a tour with one of your firefighters, and just talked about the complex nature of that fire, and certainly gave me a little appreciation for what you do, and for mitigating risk to your firefighters, so I really, thank you for all the good work you do.
Counselor Ford. Couple of things, first off, I don't know if I should really say anything, because I'm always getting accused of conflict of interest, and imagine being, but I'm gonna say it anyway. Yeah, I imagine, that's weird. And yes, thank you for all you do, because we hear about the number of deaths eventually from fentanyl and overdoses, but what the public doesn't hear a lot of is the number of call-ups to overdose, because more often than not, if meloxone or first responders get there, that person is gonna survive. We had seven of them in the city hall parking lot, and all, all of those overdoses survived. Has that affected the number of call-ups you're getting? Because when I pulled in here, actually, there was a fire truck just going up the hill and down the alley, so I'm presuming it was going to the new safety projections.
So what, what I can tell you is that as of February twentieth, last week, when I was to do the fire plan presentation, we had had close to seventy responses to overdoses from January first to February twentieth, which is a huge increase, I mean, we, we would normally, you know, five years ago, we would do around a hundred of those incidents in a year, and now we're, we're certainly tracking way more incidents, and it is becoming one of our fire workloads.
Yeah, and that becomes also an issue with ambulance, R C M P too, so it's a huge amount of added workload to all of first responders. Again, congratulations on everything you do, because, you know, seventy responses, wow, you know, and I don't know who gets there first, so that doesn't interest me, but if someone gets there first, and not like the state, so to me, that's... Okay, Counselor Yocum?
Oh, thank you. So in this ten-year plan we're about to vote on, of course, when we get to the vote, I saw that Christopher heard about Counselor Pratt bringing up a, a four-person engine, which, which I think is paramount, productive and safety, so what are we, what are we doing if you send out, say, a smaller, like, the two personnel there, how would we secure pictures for people on a follow-up?
So right now, at our station two, we do have additional overflow staffing there sometimes, and frequently, we will operate a rescue unit with two people out of that fire station, which we've done traditionally for, for a long period of time.
So, and it's just, as the, I don't, last week, I asked for the, when we made that motion, the policy, so is that in the policy?
Yeah, I've got, I actually have the policy here, and I think Mr. McCray might want to speak to that.
Yes, through your worship, the council had asked for the policy to be placed within the doctor, the documents for the city. It wasn't, in saying that the fire chief and the rest of his staff implemented that policy, so while it was not written into actual procedures, they followed through on it, so just to be very clear.
So it's in policy now?
That's correct, it's not written into policy, Chief Richardson is actually getting it put into policy, formally put in, but the actual actions that were requested by council to staff were actually implemented, so just a technical issue with that, but it did, it was followed through on.
Which is getting rectified, and that will be officially in policy soon?
Correct.
Okay.
Sure. Counselor President.
Thanks, Chief. Quick question, our old girl, our fire engine, she getting, is she in here in Nanaimo?
Uh, yeah, Shaky, the old antique fire truck is in Nanaimo, and it's presently, pieces of it are in various places throughout North America, getting some work done by people that know how to work on those, on those units. I'm unsure of the timelines as to when it will be back and in service, but the intention is to...
In service?
Well, in service, it, it is part of our fleet, officially part of our fleet, I don't know that we would take it to a fire, but when it'll be running, and be able to be used for public, public engagements, so we're, we're hoping some time this spring.
Thank you. Follow-up, does the city put any money into that?
Yeah, actually, your worship, the Shaky is in our fleet, and maintained by our Fleet Services Division, who's coordinating this work that's being done by specialists.
Before we let you go, I got one question for you, and that is, you talked about getting to the, getting to the peak of unit utilization at one, at O one. What about these responses to the overdoses that we're seeing, significant peaks in now, response required? Is this going to be part of the work plan, to very quickly, very soon, look at that, to determine best use of? best use of, for example, rescue units?
Yeah, I think that absolutely is something that's just coming to light, the fact that we may have some pressures on our unit utilization. And I think that's one of the things that this plan will allow us to do, is examine that more closely and be more responsive to it.
See, no further questions?
Actually, one quick one. For my, I need clarity, because we're voting on something very serious here. Thank you, fire chief. This is, I'm not here, this is about you, this is for my own clarity. So I heard, if we're sending the two out, that leaves three, so how do we have four on a fire? Like, if the policy has, this is a case, the policy's gonna have four people go out regardless. If we were divided up earlier, how are we gonna have four out? Does that make sense? I'm overconfusing myself here.
No. So there are times when there are five people at Station Two, that those five people will staff two pieces of equipment. But within that area, we would have two people on the rescue and three people on the engine.
So that contradicts my answer, that there isn't four people on?
There's minimum four people on, but you have two pieces of equipment. So you actually have five, if I interpret this correctly, you've got five people showing up, so you're meeting your minimum standard of four. But you have two pieces of equipment showing up instead of one. So there's a minimum of four members attending that scene. If I'm getting that correct?
No, there are times where those two units will split. But if that, I think when we initially started this conversation with Council about four-member engines, it was framed around achieving 16 members on duty, so we could have four people at all the stations. If that's Council's desire for us to fill that other gap with overtime when that situation occurs, then we can certainly do that as well.
I like to interpret it as a format, but I'll ponder that. Thank you.
Counselor Pratt.
So now I am confused, because I asked, is that 100%, and now you're saying that sometimes it goes out with three people?
So sometimes, when we do have five people, due to vacations and leaves and whatnot, there are sometimes five staff at Station Two, and then there's sometimes six. When there's six, two people would respond sometimes to some incidents on the rescue, leaving four on the engine. And when there's five, sometimes two people will respond on the rescue, leaving three on the engine. But they're within their existing response jurisdiction. Now, when we started the conversation about adding overtime for staffing, it was around achieving a minimum of 16. So the situation, I think, that may be unfolding here is that we have either 16 or 18. So we might end up in a situation where, if this is Council's desire to have us close that gap as well, then that would require us, when we have 15 people on duty, to either put five people on the engine, or call somebody in on that, to fill that gap up to 18. So I think we did have conversations about that at the time with Council on the motion, was prior to the motion being made.
Okay, I...
So some sort of slang language is that unless you're going to a fire with big trucks, you don't need four people on it. If you're going to other incidents, like a naloxone call-in, if that's the vehicle you take, you don't need the four people on it.
The rescue call will predominantly run to medical aids, medical aid calls, yeah.
Sorry, just, just, your worship, just to take into account that with the current staffing model that we have now, and the current response times that we're doing right now, we're achieving low 80s, high 90s in regards to multiple areas and multiple jurisdictions of our fire service. So for us to go and change that model to increase or anything else is exponentially more expensive based on what you get back for a value per service. So right now, we're achieving a certain level of service based on that. For us to go to the next level, it's going to have to be considered a few years down the road with cost expansions.
Thank you very much.
So can I just end this by clarifying then? Not always does a big engine go out with four on it.
Not in all circumstances.
Not in all circumstances. Thank you.
Great. Motion to receive? Receive. Counselor, thank you. Seconded by Counselor Thorpe. All is in favor. All is in favor. Chair, now we have a delegation reporting against the... Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Don Bonner from Anima. Thank you for allowing me to be here and make this presentation. As everyone is aware on Council, Council decided to remove the building of the fire hall in the 2016-2020 financial plan, and the reasons were to save on taxes. But I would like to make the point here that all citizens of Anima pay the same taxes and expect the same services. Those homeowners who build outside the 10-minute mark have to build their homes differently than those within. This area is Hammond Bay Road at Nottingham and Stevenson Point Road, every road off of Glen Oaks, and essentially everything from Nottingham Stevenson Point Road to the Charlene Boat Ramp. New construction in this area is required to meet higher setback, less glazing, and various other things in the building code if they're outside the 10-minute fire response area, and this is dictated by the building code. Yet they pay the same taxes as everyone else. And in that area, they tend to pay higher taxes due to the price of housing there. At the same meeting, the mayor suggested that we pull the new fire hall until we can figure out how to fund it. Well, guess what? We now have a way to fund it. Due to the tremendous work by the CFO, he has found $5.5 million a year for the next 20 years that we can access and not increase our taxes. This is truly a windfall to the taxpayers in Anima, as now we can build the fire hall. The fire hall, if we don't build it to lead standards, would cost about $2.5 million, and should be put in mind, what I've been told, in the Morningside area. Now is the time for Council to relook at the 2016 and 2020 financial plan, which would then affect this plan here, and bring this area up to the same standard that the rest of our city has. We have a need for this service. We have the funds for this service, and it's up to you to provide this service. It's what you were elected to do. So when Council is looking for something to do on March 12th, I suggest that you start with building a new fire hall. You can do it without raising taxes. Thank you.
Very much so. Questions, sir? Steven, thank you very much, sir. Motion to receive the delegation. Moved by Counselor Thorpe, seconded by Counselor Pratt, all in favor. opposed, Chair. So who wants to put a motion on the floor? Counselor Long?
I would move all three recommendations. Number one, approve the 10- to 15-year fire plan, including the following elements: A, B, and C. And number two, direct staff implement the first three-year service delivery plan, including A, B, and C. And number three, direct staff engage Council's Public Safety Committee in the progress of the current three-year service delivery plan, and in the development of goals and priorities for the subsequent three-year service delivery plan objectives.
Thank you. Mr. Secretary? Counselor Ford. Discussions? Counselor Pratt.
So my question is, if we approve this plan, the way it is early, the recommendations the way they are now, and based on the questioning that I have just provided, are we going to be able to have four men on every engine? Because if we're not, then I'm not in favor of approving this. And I guess I need some discussion around this. We have approved this, and now we're being told that it isn't always achieved. And I guess I'm asking, why is that? And should we be doing something different if that's the case? Because in the first three years, that's what they're saying, that they are going to be able to achieve that.
Counselor Tip.
I think where the confusion lies is that the key thing with the four-man engine is that four people are arriving on scene at a fire. And then they have the two in and two out call. And so if somebody goes in and they get stuck in there, there's somebody outside to drag them out. And so even with four men, sometimes, I don't know if the union guys agree, but even with four guys arriving, sometimes, the captain might not be ready to go in, or are they ready to go in? And that's the whole keys. Because they can't enter the fire and be in attack mode. They have to become defensive, which is sometimes safer anyhow. So from my concern, when there's five people in a hall, and one engine goes out, and the other crew may be away from it, that's where they hopefully arrive on scene when they get the call as quickly as the engine, they get the four men. But I think that's right, we're meeting that. And as I say, when I look at this, 68% medical aid, 9% motor vehicle, 4% assistance, burn complete 3.8, and fire and other is about 3.4% at the time. And a structure fire is 1.5% average per year, about 103 structure fires a year. So how many times have we arrived with a four-man engine on those is important? And that's the one we'll find. What is the timeframe? So I would suggest when there's five men, and two are in a rescue truck, and three are in the engine, they might arrive a few minutes apart, and that might delay that six-minute response. But there will be a number of men on scene. That's my view. So I believe we're meeting that standard.
That's mine. Thank you. Counselor Long.
Thank you. I think we're over-meeting that standard, from my point of view. We actually have two trucks available. There are the one, so we could just tell the fire chief, say, okay, no, don't send the other truck. Keep the five on the one truck. Set five members up with that one vehicle. That's what we're arguing. There is five members, and if they opt to go out as two on a truck, they opt to do that as two. Or they can just wait and take the four-man truck. That's what it logically sounds like to me, because there's five people there. We're only managing 16 members, four at a station at all times. It's operational on how they send those people. If they're four trucks, maybe you want to send one personnel to each truck. And if they're all four there, they're there. But we agreed to 16 members at all times, four per station. We're hearing that we're getting five per station. It's great. It's good. I'm not wrong with that. If they want to send the swamp truck up, save them down, save some wear and tear on the big truck, it's a good choice. If they need four to hit a fire, well, there's five, five members. They don't have to take the swamp truck up. They don't need to. You know, we can have the argument, well, there's two fires going on the same point, now what do you do? Well, then we're short. No matter how you look at it, and how you cut the cheese, you have four, four people at one fire, well, there's nobody at the fire next door. Well, now we're not, what, do we need eight per station? Like, split the two, two here, three here, maybe? This is a fire, send the two over here. I think we're meeting the standard. I think we're over-meeting, and I think the staff are doing an amazing job with it. That's why I support this. Here.
Counselor Pratt.
I'd like to direct the question, I guess, to staff then. Because my understanding is, based on what the chief answered for me, is that if there are five people at a station, and a rescue truck goes out with two people, and a fire also, you've got three people. It isn't those two people, those five people going to the same fire. It is going to two different incidents. And we passed a motion that we want four people on a fire truck. Now, I'm happy to get some stats on how many times does it have to go out with three people? Maybe it isn't very often. I don't know. But I really want to know that, because we passed a motion on this. And if we're not doing it, then we need to look at that. That's all I'm saying. So I really would like to have some information on that. Is it possible for us to get information on that?
So you wish that so. I directed my question to the staff here. Please be directing between your staff and your managers, after your worship.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I would like the slide to go back up that you had with all the response times and number of fires in the report. And I would like the fire chief to provide some response. You did your powerpoint presentations. You had the 2013, 2015 performance. And just while we're waiting for you to get there, just a reminder that at the Council meeting, the chair is the mayor. Questioned or directed through the mayor to me, staff, and then I directed to which staff members will be responding to questions. Thank you.
That on? So can you just repeat the question for me, please, Ms. Sammer?
To Counselor Pratt, is seeking clarification on whether or not the city and city staff, I guess yourself, is compliant with the direction that Council has given to you with respect to four-man or four-person engine?
So presently, we are staffing with a minimum of 16 people, which provides us the ability to put four people on an engine, which I believe was a big component of the conversation that was had with Council at the time. But there are situations where two people, when we have five people at Fire Station Two, that two people will go to an incident, leaving three people on the engine. I don't have information with me as to how frequent that is, or what types of incidents are occurring when that does happen. But I could certainly provide that information if it was asked for.
And a supplemental, what is the union's feedback then on your performance and support?
So I had a conversation with the union at the time when this motion came out, and asked whether or not they saw it as having, being able to still do that five and three split. And I mean, they're here, perhaps they could respond. But we did have an understanding that we would continue with splitting those five people, and that that would be acceptable for the short term.
Counselor Beston.
Thank you. Just my comments. As far as I can remember from being on Council, we were at a 94% to a 97% four-man engine component. Each and every time that we arrived at a negotiation as it related to agreements forthcoming, the gap from the 94, or 95, or 96 to 100% of four-man engine components was always at the forefront of our negotiations. For several years that I was here, have been here, it was always top of mind and something that was union-driven for a lot of requirements, for a lot of reasons. And the majority, obviously, Council felt it very important that we had four-man engine, because if three guys show up with a structured fire, they probably would, and they know they shouldn't, go in without having the necessary backup. So it's about safety, obviously, for our guys and gals. And it's about, and the cost to go from 94% to 100%, or 95, or 97, whatever it was at the time, was really insignificant. It was literally a bargaining chip, in my opinion, that was unnecessary and caused considerable amount of moral disconnection. So here we are. Now, when I read this 15-year report, the first three years, to me, it's status quo. I don't see a significant difference in what we're doing today to what we will do in the next three years of this, other than saying, how do we shape, how do we form, how do we make this better, how do we ensure that we continue to provide all of the same stuff that we're doing right now, or have been doing today, and for the next three years? And over the course of the next three years, we're going to be able to talk about how year four to 15, or year four to seven, will play out. I'm hearing we're not going to be investing any more money. I'm hearing all of these things. Might there be a decision made along the way that goes, hey, we're going to build that new fire hall? Maybe. And we can't forget, the fire people, chief, and has said, you know what, that location that we had on Hammond Bay, that's not the right place. So it's, and I do recall that being in open. You know what, we don't want to build it there anymore. It's not the right place. So I think what we're doing is extremely healthy. I think that this report just lays it out for the next three years, the status quo. I think that we're always going to have four men on our engine. You can't split five in half. Like, it's not possible. And do we need eight to be able to? No. No. No, we can't staff every hall with thirty-two. Does that mean that there might be five guys at one station and five guys at another one and the other two have only got four on a night? Well, maybe until they get shifted around. Maybe. So I, I think we're going down to the right place. I, I understand that this is a long time coming and, so I, I, I think we're in the right place, I think we're doing the right thing. Uh, thank you.
Yeah. I see, I have no further speakers, so I'm going to call a question, all is in favor. Proposed motion carried. Next data, correspond, not related to a report to council, this one dated January twelfth, from Director Paul Hasselbeck and Kelly McClure, leader of operations tobacco and vapor prevention.
Can, um, Mr. McClure speak to that?
Mr. McClure.
Thank you, worship. Maybe just some background for council's benefit. We actually have two bylaws, um, in the city that regulate smoking. We have a nineteen eighty-seven, uh, smoking regulation bylaw, and we have more work, unfortunately, Mr. Harding's not here, but we have more work that was done by Parks Department more recently, I think it was twenty-eleven, there was a Parks bylaw that was updated to clarify that smoking in public places, parks, beach, uh, were not permitted. Unfortunately, both the bylaws that we have, eighteen seventy and twenty-eleven, both refer to smoking specifically as basically burning, uh, burning tobacco, like tobacco. So the updates that the province have done more recently in twenty seventeen, start to include things like e-cigarettes, um, in their legislation, and this is largely a suggestion to look at amending our bylaws to include tracking more, I want to say modern, these more, uh, recent types of ingest, ingesting tobacco or other materials. So, uh, maybe worthwhile for council to, drug staff to review our bylaws with the intent of updating the report for potential.
Okay, that's a pretty good report. Thank you. Councilor for home.
Thank you. I was actually just going to make a motion. To make a motion to brick staff to relook at our bylaws. Say, great, smoking, smoking in public places, in our civic facility.
Okay. As, as was made up.
Yeah, I, I'll clear.
Counselor.
Well, second, that, and smoking is the biggest lead of fires in our, in all of our structured fires, the biggest category that we have is cigarette smoking in station one, two, and three, it's the highest category, caused by cigarettes. And now these batteries pull up, which is pretty interesting, the lithium ion. Talk about smoking.
House for best, a motion.
Yes, uh, I, I support the motion, uh, and I'm, I have, I, I support bringing in the electric, or whatever the heck you want to call it. Um, and I'm just wondering, try to wonder out loud, uh, what, now, how about with marijuana? So in terms of the electric and cigarettes, what are you calling that decapping and cigarettes, whatever? So, decapping cigarettes?
Nicotine.
So marijuana. So now this case is where medical marijuana are going to go to, that you can, you can smoke medical marijuana because it's medical and it's on fire, so give them a cigarette in a hotel room, in, in anywhere you want. It's medic, it's medicine. So will we include, uh, if we're going to do cigarettes, then I think we're going to do marijuana as part of this, uh, by law revisit? As a tourist attraction? Well, it might be a tourist attraction, a tour, anything.
So, the question to staff, through Mr. Summer.
So we will look at, we will look at that. Good point.
Um, other questions?
I just wanted to state, uh, with respect to, with respect to this, I, I, I learned something on Friday night that, uh, that made me kind of go, what, really? And it was long, those lines. The, um, we see branches of the major sites are right now, as we speak, preparing to ensure that all of their smoking areas are now segregated and allow the use of medical marijuana. So all of their patios are all being adapted to be able to allow medical marijuana use because many of their, many of their, uh, members are medical marijuana users. And I guess what we should be looking at, if we're looking at this, uh, if I could, um, this issue about prohibition, we should be seeing how that dovetail turned to Brett Miller and Ron Callard versus the Crown, which was, which was a person's right to their medicine. So if we're looking at rules with respect to consumption, we're going to have to concern ourselves with a person's right to dedicate themselves. House for four person.
Yeah, just on that, I, I mean, my understanding is that for someone to get actual medical marijuana, they need a prescription from a physician. So I could see allowing that in certain spots, you have smoked some nights, like, marijuana, whatever. But the person would have to show a valid prescription. I mean, if, if I get caught driving down the road, standing speeding there, it's like, hold over, I involve my medication, but they're going to want to see my prescription. Or they might down deal with prescription medication. So surely there's ways to do that, I, I think, just the allowing of smoking pot for the sake of smoking pot, uh, should be treated just like cigarettes when it's legalized and you get those outside areas to do that.
I just wanted to let you know, that was one of the things, one part of their process was that everyone who completed the adalition, uh, using medical marijuana would have to be able to produce their card.
Yeah, and, and that makes sense. I'm not against smoking pot, I mean, like, this, but, but other things, but I recognize that it's a very common thing to do. Once it's legalized, then you can deal with that as well.
Thank you. I wrote Councilor Best for, for Councilor.
Um, I'm starting adding the marijuana component into revisiting this, uh, policy of bylaws as a whole new level, not an element to it. And to the point of what ID, um, you know, I, I, I don't know if you get a dog tag or like, category, what do you get so that you get, because somebody comes up, somebody says, and I've had, I have got several complaints, like people that walk, uh, along the Indian Trail and somewhere not far from the Garibou or wherever, they go through, uh, a place there, then they go, and they go, oh my God, um, and they feel stoned by the time they get through that area. But nonetheless, so like, I, how do you go up to somebody and say, is, is that medical or not? Like, when, ask them to, or take ID, like, I, I mean, that's how I usually get ID, was there, I had to take ID, so, whatever, I mean, come on. All right, how, um, to me, it's the so many meters from the door, it's this, it's that, it's these things, um, that we can make do, right? Holy cow, you don't want to have to work this place down and then you're trying to get a stick back somewhere.
Councilor home. Um, thank you. Yeah, the, well, there, there, well, I actually have several things, you know, the, the main one that I want to focus on is to make outdoor public spaces smoke free, or evading tobacco, vapors, and other substances that can be inhaled in areas where children play, including beaches, parks, playgrounds, sports fields, and athletic stands. That's the one, honestly, I don't really care if you need mari- medical marijuana, don't do it in front of my kids. Plain as simple. Take a pill. Go somewhere else. You don't have the right for my child to smell that crap. You know, if we did that with cigarettes and everything, that's great, yeah, we talked about bars and weed, that's fine, if there's no kids around, whatever. Fill your boots, produce a cart. But kids, this is where I want staff, you know, we're trying to protect our kids. And you don't need to smoke marijuana. I don't know, understand why people think you need to smoke marijuana. You have a cookie, you have a frowning, you have a thing, it's all around here, you can have whatever you want. So smoking that doesn't make any sense to me in, in, in public spaces where children are around, and that's where I, I want really staff to investigate that. Yeah, that's great, you have your right to, to medicine, but it doesn't mean that you have the right to smoke in front of my kids in a public space, so that's my question.
Yeah.
No further speakers, I'm going to call a question, all is in favor. All those questions ready? So you're going to come up with this, you know, and I'm going to go around. I'm here. The next one is delegations, not related to our report to challenge the council. And the first delegation is Agent Schroeder. Agent Schroeder in the room? Okay. Next one is Mr. Kevin Story, concerning some reports to the proposal to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had requested a bar stool, so, uh, if I need to take leave of the chair during this. You okay? Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman and, uh, council members. As many of you know, uh, my health has not been good, so I haven't been able to get here until tonight. Um, I'd like to congratulate, uh, Councilor Bestwick and all the staff and people that were involved with the hockey presentation on the weekend. I didn't get there, but I think it was fabulous. Now, when it comes to our event center, when this initially came up last fall, actually, I think I talked to Councilor Bestwick about this, I was tremendously in favor of it. I thought it was a great idea. But as time has gone on, I've started to change my mind. Now, I've been involved with a lot of the political conversation that's gone on here, and I recognize that I'm probably the most, not the most popular guy in the room tonight. But when I first came and spoke to council, one of the first times. The very first time that I came to speak to council, can't remember how long ago it was, maybe a couple of years ago or a year and a half ago, uh, actually, it was, uh, Councilor Kip said, you know, tell people who you are and what your experience is. So I didn't come here tonight to be political. I came here tonight to talk to you from my experience. Forty years in the construction business, about twenty of those years, either as a contractor or a supervisor on product, on, on projects, similar in size and similar in complication to what we're looking at down at one port place. I emailed all of council, I asked them to get out their technical reports and have a look before I came tonight, because there are some big red flags in that technical report. And I'm going to speak from my experience. I have about five projects that I have either contracted or that I was a supervisor on that specifically deal with some of the problems that are on that site. I've also built a couple of swimming pools and I built a hockey arena over the years, so I have a bit of experience in this and I feel very fortunate that this project comes up and I'm able to add to the conversation from my experience. So, over the past week, while I've been at home, I, I've come up with some notes. Thanks, Bill. There we go, let's try that. And these, I'll just, okay. I've taken, I've taken the wording and the figures directly out of your geotechnical report that was done by Tetra Tech. And I commend them, they've done a very good job. And I don't know what you paid them, but you got your money's worth. But there's some real big red flags here. So I want to go through what I've highlighted just tonight. Okay, there are complex and therefore specialized foundation options and or ground improvement consideration which need to be required on soil mitigation. Liquification potential, I've been involved with this before, that this project could liquefy during a seismic event. And we need to decide, we need to discover at what point, at what size of a seismic event that will happen. The depth of competent bedrock on this project, there's two layers. There's a surface layer that's fractured, and then there is a, a second layer that goes anywhere from fourteen to seventeen meters below grade. That's a long way down, that's fifty-five feet, folks. There could be, uh, there is a potential that there's an old coal mine under the project, under the project. If that's the case, the engineering and backfilling of that coal mine to prevent a sinkhole is incredibly expensive and incredibly complicated. So your engineers have suggested further testing, cone penetration testing, additional bedrock coring, investigation of potential sinkhole areas for unmanned, uh, unmapped mine shafts. Now we get into the environmental issues. And your engineer states, due to the presence of elevated hydrocarbon concentrations and chromium contamination in soil, any excess overburden requires excavation and offsite removal and will require proper screening and final onsite inspection as per contaminated site CSR groundwater, uh, number six. Again, we're looking at a horrendously expensive process. Also, they're saying that due to the presence of coal waste with elevated hydrocarbon concentrations and potential methane issues, the potential for soil vapor mitigation into the proposed building should be considered. It should be not more than considered, it must be mandatory. We're talking about putting people to work in methane, uh, and carbon concentrations that could be carcinogenic to the employees that we have in that project. I'm going to do this as briefly as I can and then I'll run through a few costs for you. On page one, the geotechnical exploration consisting of coring four test holes to the depth of up to five meter into the competent bedrock to access the depth of the bedrock. Well, that competent bedrock starts at fifteen meters. So we're talking about drilling to a depth of twenty meters. Don't forget, the first level is fractured and it's not competent, would not hold the weight of any building. Again, on, on five point two, he discusses the fact that there may be mines there and investigation must take place to discover, uh, whether there's mine shafts under there or not. They think there might be in one corner, but they're not sure. Okay, he's talking about the combined, com- combined fill thickness in the area of the proposed development location ranged from two point two to six point five with an average thickness of four point three. Now, that's the fill that's already in place. Now, I've built a couple of swimming pools and I've built a couple of hockey rinks, and they're both identical. When you dig for those, you have to dig underneath the slab that the rink is going to sit on, about three and a half meters. So all of that soil has to be taken out. And if the rest of the site is like that with the contamination, then it may also have to come out, but we don't know. So I've got some figures, and what I've done is I've based it on the halfway point, excavating two and a half to three, uh, uh, feet. two and a half to three, uh, uh, feet down as opposed to five feet down. Then we talk about groundwater. This is a huge item, something that's not usually addressed, but I did a project about, I think it was about eight years ago up in Courtney, uh, that was, uh, was a condominium project and it was probably about the same size project as we're looking at here with the arena. And we had tremendous problems with groundwater and also with water that seeped in because it was right beside the river and the ocean. And when the tidal flows came up, it filled the outset. And that winter, it rained every day for seven months. So, de-watering that, I had to hire four extra people just to man the pumps every morning. We would go to work some days and the excavation was below, uh, natural road height and we would go to work some mornings, the job site would be covered in three feet of water and we would have to pump that all out in order to get the trucks and everything in there. And it was a huge project. And then again, we're talking about the seepage that may come in from the ocean. I was fortunate enough to also work at the Gold River when we built the new paper mill in Gold River and I was on, worked directly underneath the layout superintendent, I was sort of the secretary in charge of layout, and we were responsible for placing all of the concrete, uh, and taking care of all the farm work and so on, laying it out. With the biggest problem that we had there was that when the tide came out, we had these tremendously big, uh, farms, sixteen by sixteen by six foot deep, hundreds of them. And that was supposed to float the pulp mill. Well, it didn't. When the water came in, after the, all the weight of the mill was on, the mill started to sink. The first piece of machinery that they turned on there was the log, log chipper, and it was so unbalanced, the steel teeth hit the steel side on the other, blew the teeth straight up, blew the roof right off, right off of the building. It cost them four million dollars to repair.
Mr., sorry, you are down to ten minutes.
Down to ten?
Yep.
Two more minutes to get the cost.
Counsel?
Yes.
So I ran some costs for you, folks. And this simply can't be done for the amount of money that you're borrowing. I estimate that the concrete alone, the concrete placement, forming and placement alone will be seven point two million. I estimate that your excavation and your soil mitigation will be three point six million. Then you add on the ten million that you've got for roads and sewers, you still haven't put in the blasting that may be necessary, the price of catch basins, concrete bond beams and, uh, uh, steel that may be in slabs, gets us to about thirty million. The cost of construction will be about sixty-eight million. That figure is not bad in your estimate. But that takes us, if we add a five percent constituency, to a hundred and five million dollars. So, that's the reality of it. So, I'm sure that you have questions for me, and maybe you don't, I'd be surprised if you don't, but as a contractor that worked his life in construction, worked on five or six projects of this size, I think you'll be lucky to get it built for a hundred and five million dollars, possibly as much as a hundred and twenty. The ground is comparable to that where the convention center was built, I believe the overage there was twenty-five million, twenty-two million. So, they're comparable because the sites are comparable, it's a bad site to work with.
Questions for the delegation? Sarah?
Um, first of all, I'd like to take Mr. Story for a thoughtful preparation and step forward engagement. He posed some good questions. Um, if counsel is reasonable, I'd like to invite Mr. Lindsay to comment a little bit on the environment, um, Ms. Fowler to comment on some of the engineering observations, uh, Mr. Mama to comment on contingency and budget. And, uh, again, I just wanted to, um, just appreciative to have this type of dialogue, I think this is the type of dialogue that needs to occur and thank you for that. I said last week and I reiterated this week, staff really approached this major capital project in a different way than the previous administration. We didn't wanna repeat some of the mistakes that were made before. We wanted to invest in the type of studies that allow us to have a realistic look at the cost of prepping sites and constructing the facility. So I, I'm satisfied that we've done a great due diligence and you've noted that our, that GeoTech report certainly took a good look at it. We wanna avoid having forty percent, uh, cost overrun, twenty-two million dollars is quite significant, so, um, definitely happy with the process that we're using and I will now sort of allow, invite staff to provide some comments, maybe start with Dale on the environment.
Thank you. The, uh, as counsel is aware, after we bought the property in 2013, um, we initiated a significant amount of work to better understand the environmental conditions of the property. As, as I think everyone's aware, majority of the property is, is filled, is formed a water lot, so it's entirely covered with fill. The area we're talking about, the report talks about on average four and a half meters across, across that section significantly. But through that environmental work that we did, we were able to identify, um, environmental constraints over the entire property that we own. Tetra Tech was our engineering firm at the time that did that work. When we moved to step two or phase two of the event center, they were again retained because of their background and knowledge of the property to look specifically at the area the event center has proposed. So, I'm not gonna debate the numbers that Mr. Story's presented, but I would point out that in, in the report, in Tetra Tech's report, they look specifically at the issue of remediation and they look at the realities of the site, uh, with fill and that the most likely approach for construction would be piles on that property, not infiltration form within the pile, extensive piling would be done to connect to the, to the bedrock. What that would allow for is the majority of the soil, the soils to remain in place. So, the, the report talks about worst case scenario, if you actually had to remove the nine contamination, it estimates up to five hundred thousand dollars for Google, with up to seventy-five thousand dollars for environmental, for engineering fees. It recognizes then, an estimated best case scenario, we, we deal with it through a risk management approach, leave it in place, the nature of the use will allow you essentially have the site, uh, may likely even be more fill on top of the existing fill. And then at that point, uh, the estimates in the report are as little as eleven thousand dollars to complete that.
Thank you, your team.
Just someone else?
Yeah, just asking. Your worship, some of the questions on the geotechnical, um, and the green action that the, the, the site, of course, not that we've talked about some, uh, and we've talked about conference center. There are, if you're related to the environmental issues, uh, the current best practice, no?
Uh, more, I don't, I won't say. The, um, for environmental, um, standards is to do a risk assessment, so, uh, which means you leave, uh, the contaminants in site and there are acceptable standards and I won't go into the hundreds of them, and that we have for all the contaminants and how you manage it. Um, but essentially you cap it and you do monitoring, um, of those sediments and they can stay in place. The one advantage of doing, as Mr. Lindsay said, the boring, um, and, uh, and, uh, piling i- is that if you end up with an earthquake, uh, or infiltration of seawater or any of those types of events, uh, the structure will, uh, stay in place better than any other method such as the slab on grade or any other type of construction. So, um, and that certainly is, as I said, the conference center had, uh, that approach also with the cross being fair. And that is what added the additional cost, uh, for the most part. I am, have specifically asked our, uh, project managers, uh, to look into that further from this initial, you know, this report that we received. Um, so that is part of our continuing due diligence to address that. But those are the accepted practices, both for the environmental, to deal with the geotechnical piece, as well as to deal with foundation, uh, calculations. And if we, in terms of a coal mine, yes, that's an additional, uh, issue that also has been raised, um, and essentially how, there's a whole variety variation in terms of how you address them and depends on the circumstances that you have. Uh, those can be addressed through a, a geotechnical and a foundational analysis, uh, in further detail. The balance, of course, that we've, uh, the council's well aware of is that we've done quite, uh, extensive reports, more so than, uh, average and, or at least more so than done was, done for the conference center. Um, so on one hand, we've been criticized for that, uh, but on the other hand, people say you need to do more work. So, um, generally, if an elected official said usually you're doing the right job and you're having both of those, uh, criticisms. But we're trying to balance, uh, that need without doing an extensive amount of, um, yes, yes, and I said, essentially I haven't met a, a waterfront property that I've redeveloped that's either not contaminated or, uh, doesn't have, uh, the ebb and flow of tides and water in there. So it's a, it's a normal circumstance to have to deal with, um, and to be able to go through that. And in terms of contingency, we do have those contingencies, um, put in place and that is the further analysis that we're currently doing, so we will continue to do that due diligence, uh, with our project manager, um, as part of, uh, that process that before and advise council before any final decisions are made, um, on that analysis. In terms of new technologies, yes, there's quite a number of new technologies that are out. Uh, again, our project manager is well aware of those and, uh, has used them actually in some more recent projects. There's also the ability that we have, uh, a sewer main, one of the major sewer mains in the region going through there, uh, that has to be relocated, that's been included in the cost, but it also has an ability for us to take the waste heat off, um, and to be able to do some of the renewable technologies, uh, with it as well. So, what some people think is a problem sometimes is an opportunity. But that is, it's a risk assessment process that we're doing and we're gonna continue to do that due diligence and I do appreciate those issues being raised because as I said, I've shared, uh, I share some of those ones and those are issues that we're continuing to analyze further from that, and, and initial geotechnical report. Your worship?
Uh, through, through worship, the. Okay. We saw that all may not be able to hear.
Thank you. Uh, through, through your worship, the, I appreciate the, the comments for my colleagues. The, my role is to put a dollar sign on some of this stuff that people raise, um, and what we have done, I can't speak to the actual amounts in terms of contingencies that are, that are in there, uh, because we're gonna have a, a public process if we ever get to that, a point for people to bid on this work. Uh, we have taken into account the, uh, information provided to date, uh, in the studies that we've got related to the site. Uh, we've also taken into account the comments, preliminary comments from the engineers in terms of how they could approach this. They have indeed looked at different options as outlined by Ms. Fowler. Uh, so from a financial perspective, unfortunately, I can't speak to the amount of contingency that's been built into it, uh, but we, we have provided, I think, uh, more than what the report has asked for.
Counselor Bestwick, questions for the delegation? I just wanted to thank Mr. Story for coming forward and, yes, we have met previously, uh, to discuss the event center in general, and I think Mr. Story wanted to respond to some of the responses, so I appreciate letting you do that, but, um, also, piling and preloading and, uh, have, have been done on a massive amount of projects and I, I know one in particular, the great civic forum at the base of the Alex Bridge and Bridge and an industrial center on the ball, it was, the whole thing's built up piling and not that far from the bridge there. Uh, and, uh, so there is ways to mitigate these things. I think at the end of the day though, you wanna make sure that you're mitigating them within budget. So I think it's not a, not a case of whether you can do it or not, because clearly you can. It's just, does it come in on budget? That's, that's the issue to me. Get it done on budget regardless of what the conditions are, 'cause you can't, 'cause that's, that's what we're saying, that we're, have the capability and capacity to, um, not whether you can do it or not. That's just my opinion, through a little bit of experience. Any other questions for the delegation? Counselor Kip?
So, just, uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Story. I appreciate the history and the project background. Your concerns were there are settlement, liquefaction, two separate settlements to the depth of the bedrock and liquefaction, and then contamination. And competent bedrock, of course, will come with that settlement factor, whether it's bedrock or not. And then, of course, coal workings and some soil vaporization, and that's a concern to you, so staff will deal with, on those, that, that will deal with immediately, everything. And the utilities one is always a tough one. Part of the utilities we're putting in there is to service the rest of that land, uh, to go. I much appreciate the points you brought up from the report. I appreciate you coming forward. And I, I hope staff will deal with those issues.
Counselor Fuller?
Um, not so much that I missed Mr. Story, I appreciate him coming forward. Anybody with experience in this type of thing knows that, uh, it can go either two ways. It can come in under budget or over budget, there's things you may never see that come up, there's things you anticipate that may not come up.
Uh, this one's more, uh, it mentions in the Tetra Tech report, uh, the, that during the conceptual design process, it's recommended by a qualified environmental consultant. And that is in part, manage any access, fills, so there's groundwater seepage that are generated from future construction, for, 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 like removal and also crescent potash. So, will we be hiring, or will the, uh, project manager be hiring such, uh, environmental consultants? Because that is recommended and I would assume that's in the budget because it's in the report.
Essentially said, uh, two things in terms of what your question is, the environmental remediation, sorry?
It said, in terms of the environmental contamination, we have already actually gone through the approval process, uh, in the contaminate, under the contaminated site regulation of the province. And we have approval up to the point of, I believe, subdivision, which means essentially what I was, I was trying to summarize before, it allows us, our methodology has met their standards and we need to prove how we're going to do the risk assessment process, which depends on how you build a site. So, uh, we will get, that's, that's the consideration at time of building permit for that. So that's going to address the, the, the environmental stuff. The geotechnical stuff is, as I said, ongoing, uh, but there is a balance between what we're going to do, uh, now, before and, and up to a decision point that council has to make at the end of March, um, versus afterwards. So that's a, a balance, so we're very cognizant of, and I do appreciate your point, understanding that there is always risk in undertaking these projects, um, and, uh, that's probably what we're trying to mitigate, but, um, it's not a perfect science.
Thank you. So, uh, Mr. Story, did you have a couple supplemental questions?
I just, uh. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of responses to, uh, what has been brought up. I looked at the quantity survey for the, uh, material that had to be removed and they'd estimated at a hundred, uh, twenty dollars per metric ton, come up with a figure of three to five hundred K to remove contaminated, so I basically did the same thing, but I went by metric, uh, metric, uh, yards, let's say just yards, cubic meters. Uh, my estimate, it was way higher than this, and, and, but my price, uh, per unit was about the same. And what I did was I, I just took half of what they estimated and I thought that that would be a pretty conservative figure, half of what they estimated. We have to remember, some of this fill goes down seventeen meters. I estimated it at two and a half meters, so, uh, as far as the, as far as the piles go, I agree with Mr. Bestwick, Counselor Bestwick, I mean, uh, I built the Royal Oak project in Victoria, which is right beside the Commonwealth Pool. We drilled, we, we put hundreds of piles in there and the cost varies dramatically depending on what time of pile you're driving. If it's a standard wood creosel. If it's a standard wood creosol sole pile, might cost you, say, five to ten thousand dollars a pile. If you put in a lolly pile, which is a metal pipe filled with concrete and reinforcing, that can cost you sixty thousand bucks a piece. So the only way to determine is to have the engineers go back in, do what's suggested in this report. The first thing you need to do, if the referendum passes, is to get this engineering company in, to get that environmental company in there, to give what is called a specific site profile. No contractor will give you a, an estimate without that, and I doubt that you will get license from the provincial government to stage six without that. So the very next step is to do that. We kind of got the cart and the horse here a bit.
Make a comment, they can, unfortunately, they can hear me on the mic. Part of sort of the cost management was balanced in the right level of due diligence going into a referendum, and then the type of work that happens, should there be a yes vote? And there is a comprehensive strategy that's being overseen by Colliers, our project manager, which will start the moment, if it's a yes vote, then that work starts. We've done preliminary work to take us to that point, and then there's a whole program that'll occur afterward.
My final comment, then. We've got, what, thirteen days before the referendum? I would have your contract manager get to work on this right now, so that he can let you know the day the referendum handles, is it going to cost us eighty million, or is it going to cost us a hundred and twenty? He can, he can look at my figures, he can look at the figures here. I'm sure they're very confident, I don't know Colliers at all, but I'm sure they're very confident if they, if they have been hired by this council. So why not? You're paying them, put them to work. Say, okay, let's get realistic, what could this cost in the long run, before we go any further? Then you know, and the people know. I mean, really, all the people want is an honest answer, is it going to cost eighty million? It's in dispute all over the community, or is it going to cost a hundred and five? If you say, look, it's eighty million, but it may be a hundred and five, it may be a hundred and twenty, decide on that. That's all they're asking for, that's all I ask for, except I don't want it down there, I don't want it on that waterfront. That's my final comment.
So, and staff does have to respond to that. We have done the due diligence, and we're relying on the expert reports, the vetting of those reports, and the cost estimates for site preparation and construction, and the, the price that we're going at is eighty million, and we have a high level of confidence in that, for the reasons articulated by Mr. Lindsay on the environment, Ms. Fowler on the new technologies approach to building. I do recognize and appreciate your experience and your work, but I'm going to be relying on the studies that we've spent our time and our money on for the last six months. We haven't done this overnight. We've been getting studies done since September. We've invested considerable sums to make sure we have them, and that is the proper level of due diligence. Taking it to the point where we take it out for bid, that's not done at this point in time. So with our risk mitigation strategy, we are comfortable and confident with the estimate of eighty million dollars.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to receive the delegation? Moved by Counselor Bestwick, seconded by Counselor Fuller. Your listen favorite, closed motion carries. Thank you, sir. Any questions? Any questions?
I can speak, Brett Taylor.
They won't hear you at home.
I can't see them either.
You need to go on the other end, tell me something.
No, I don't want them. Question here.
From what I've just heard, are piles involved in building this center?
So, by understanding the question to be, to counsel, is whether or not the company to build the center is somehow connected to anyone on council or city staff? The answer is no?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
It's been discussed about supporting the foundation with piles.
I thought you said piles.
I thought you did that too.
There's nobody's pile.
I can see, I don't have any piles.
We don't, I don't have any piles. The question, Mr. Taylor, is are there piles involved in building a structure?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Staff, Mr. Sammer.
Yes, there is piles, yes.
What type of piles?
Yes. I know, as I said, I'm sorry, I wasn't here at the time the conference center was constructed, so I don't know what kind of piles we're building now.
Can I say something? Typically, pile and grade beam construction is used on more soil. Dawson Creek apartments I've done is all corset, cored out, and bond beams, put on concrete bond beams, put a grade level, typically how they're doing in the fallouts and up north, and that's type of soil you're getting, it might not have the contamination we have here, but it's typical up in the Peace River country, where the big buildings, arenas, the Dawson Creek Arena, is built on piles and grade beams. So big concretes do a grade beam from pile to pile, and of course, the soil compression factors are taken in consideration, and the number of depths and all those things. So this is typical in that type of soil, to have a post and beam construction buried below grade.
Don't forget Third Street Crossing, of the stream down there on Third Street, just above Fitzwilliam. You brought in and bought all kinds of treated piles, and you were told by an environment candidate, you couldn't use them. So watch out, I know who to talk to.
You don't know.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
In listening to the fire report tonight, I believe you can go to the incident, daily incident report on the city webpage, and you will see, as there is structure, fires, et cetera, several engines attending. In other words, one from Hall One, one from Hall Two, one from Hall Three, depending on the level of the fire, my opinion. Even if it had two people on a truck, that puts a dozen people at the scene, depend on the number of trucks. So sometimes, I believe it can be misleading to say there must be four on a truck. I agree. I think there should even be two on a rescue truck, and I think that's where the council is falling down, when you've had a proposal of a list a couple of council meetings ago, to talk to union and British Columbia municipalities about financial aid, help for all the municipalities that are involved in first responder program.
Do you have a question, sir?
Yes, when are you going to do that? To, to ask for financial aid, so that we can put two men on a small truck in each hall for first responder, because their calls are steady, going steady all the time? And one excuse, in my opinion, is to the ambulance, B C ambulance, B C government, is how many times are you sending an ambulance from Nanaimo to Parksville to call them to Port Alberti, because they're all busy?
Counselor, stop, stop you there, sir. We can't answer those questions. When are we going to ask, your, your question is, when are we going to ask for financial aid with respect to, to first responders?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Because I think that's a big portion of their work.
Sammer?
I'm just checking for deadlines for motion.
And my next question is, when, I believe, in listening to the past, about four men on a truck, when can we recognize the situation that, depend on the type of fire, that more than one truck attends that scene? So if there's two men on a truck, you've got four at the scene that you need to have because of whoever goes into that smoke-covered building, et cetera. So a lot of times, when you've got a truck...
What's your question, sir?
When, when can we start recognizing the amount of trucks that go to an actual fire, and the argument about how many are on that truck? I agree, there's no problem with four, but if you're short down to three, there's always a second truck coming with four on it. So you've got seven or eight men there.
That's right.
Sir, Counselor, you're welcome.
Thank you. In regards to Mr. Taylor's questions and comments, I just wanted to mention that in my two years here, I've heard delegates get out there to lecture us, and I get to a question at all, but I've, I haven't been harassed to give this question, so I wanted to do it, respectfully, Mr. Taylor. He should be warranted the same airtime as any other delegate that's coming for us. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I do have a question, but I tried to give a little more information.
Oh, I know, but I was just saying, we've had people go on podium lectures with no question at all, and not be interrupted, and, how you were interrupted three times. Thank you.
From the one that I know, a question I have.
It's on, it's on.
I have asked several times. I've asked several times to clarify a story that appeared in the bulletin recently. It indicated we had borrowed fifty million dollars for this, for the conference center. As you, those who were here then, will recall, we had a referendum which indicated thirty million dollars would be borrowed for this project. I would like to know, my, my question is, did we end up with fifty million dollars in borrowing after that referendum? Or was some other man found for its funding?
Counselor, can I ask a question? Counselor Bestwick, can you answer that question?
I don't think I can, but my best guess is that nobody in this room is probably really able to give you this specific detail on how much and when, other than to tell you that we're at a two-point-four million dollar annual mortgage payment that expires in twenty twenty-six, or whenever it expires. I don't even want to talk about the referendum question, although I'd like to. But can anybody in the room speak to where the estimate is for what the facility ended up costing? That would be, that would be interesting. How much did we borrow? About two-point-four million dollar...
I'm just suggesting that if that figure is correct, we ended up borrowing one point, quite, more than twice the amount that was approved by the citizenry of Nanaimo on that project. My question is, relates to, could this happen again in this project, that rather than the eight, eighty million, we end up with a hundred and ninety million, which would be the same ratio here in the project? My guess is, we couldn't, because I don't think that borrowing would stretch that far. But my real question is, how far can citizens trust a, a motion that supposedly limits their borrowing, but if this is true, that we went on and borrowed another twenty million dollars secretly, it leaves a lot, a lot of questions open on trust.
Well, I'm going to respond to that, because I had, if we borrowed another twenty million dollars, and I didn't vote on it after twenty oh five November, so if we did, I don't know about it. So if there's a trust issue here, about whether or not I did something as a member of council in twenty oh six to twenty sixteen, then I didn't do anything illegal.
I'm not even suggesting it would be illegal, it's not.
I'm trustworthy.
There are staff members that can't answer, if I'll answer a little bit, and then Mr. Meme will. So I prepared a, I had staff, two weeks ago, at the last meeting, I raised this, because of the, the issue of trust within the community with how the cost of the center was, was approached, and planned by Mr. Berry and Mr. Waylon, the regime that was in place at that time. And I did that because I wanted to understand what the concerns were. So what staff has prepared is that the final estimate for the referendum question was fifty million dollars.
So they did borrow, they did borrow.
That was the cost estimate to build the facility. In the end, it cost seventy-two million dollars, so it was twenty-two billion dollars, or more than forty percent over budget. I did not ask staff to identify what revenue streams the additional twenty-two million dollars came from, so that's something that we can certainly take a look at. I think that's one part of it. Yeah, so I think, and I raise that because both of those, former staff that have been away for five, ten years now from the city, certainly are pointing into question the methodology and the approach of existing staff and our CFO. And I have the utmost confidence in his ability to look at our budget, manage our budget, and identify revenue streams. So he's actually the chief financial officer, he's running the finance department, and his staff are coming up with these figures. They actually work here now, so that's who's giving these recommendations to you, beginning them for the rest of the chief of CFO, COO. So I'm confident with our process, and confident with our estimations, and we've learned from past mistakes, and that's why we're saying, invested this money in the due diligence, so that when the staff say we have a level of confidence that this will cost fifty million dollars to build, we pay them. So when we say there's existing revenue streams, and we can afford it, we know that. And when we say our capital class and our asset management for twenty years is not compromised, we know that. And while we say things like Terminal, or the Northfield Boundary Road, the Backston branch is still funded, they're still funded, the budget is approved of. So I think that's an important correction of the record. I don't know if Mr. Meme wants to add anything else.
Through your worship, I think the question is simple. Have I still, we borrowed for the conference center, we borrowed thirty million dollars as was approved. The issue of how this go finance and trust and issues like that happen, yes, we support and approves these, they, they also have an external auditor who comes after what my staff do, and look through and says, council states you can borrow thirty million dollars, so when you get the authority to borrow the extra. So that process is well covered, twenty, thirty million dollars was, was borrowed, will be paid off in twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven. We're paying about two-point-three million dollars in debt, that is for that. The issue of the fact that we borrowed fifty million, if that's what was in the paper, that's incorrect, that's totally incorrect.
Okay. That's, that was my major question.
The other forty-two million dollars came from property tax increases?
It's a combination of community bank's fund, the combination of the...
Reserve funds, I think.
Reserve funds, the combination of the beginning as well, so.
Okay, that was, that was my whole question, was did we borrow fifty million, or did we borrow thirty million? I mean, that raises the question of where did the rest of the money come from, but I recognize there are a number of sources from which it could come. But when I saw it in the paper, and recognizing what the referendum said, it raised that question. I mean, as Counselor Bestwick has pointed out, what we're looking at here is risks and rewards in a project. And, you know, we do have to remember that a large part of that extra twenty million went into the subsoil of this project, of the conference center, where it was built on fill, alike we have here. And so you, you have to recognize that there will be questions in that regard, given those similarities. Anyway, you answered my question, thank you.
Counselor Fuller? Yeah, I, I found it.
Yeah, I found it. I found Ron's question quite interesting when he first brought it up. Because I was quite involved with Franz Plamen and I on opposing the conference center and all of that stuff at the time. And yeah, it did say $52 million, ended up $72 million. Now, well, yes, but let's say $72 million, we'll leave it at $72. The official, we know it was. Yeah. So, what I find very interesting here is that the very people that prompted Mr. Boland's question are now criticizing our current staff. In my opinion, and this is my personal opinion, our current staff learned a heck of a lot from the DICZ, D-I-C-Z, demical as we like to call it, and would likely to never make the same mistake. They've done so much due diligence on this that it's... It is, you cannot compare it to the DICZ. This is not comparable to the DICZ. Our staff have done a fantastic job on mitigating risks to the community.
The one thing we did do was getting sector of municipalities to approve our borrowing by law. And when they do that, they took a look at our audit, they took a look at our financials, they took a look at a number of financial documents to see whether or not the revenue stream existed, to take a look at the health of our debt borrowing. Right now, we're at 13%. If we add the $80 million, it takes us to 25% of our borrowing capacity, which means there's 75% of unused borrowing capacity the city has. That's something the Corps of Service Review identified and said that we have low debt, and we intend more and more to do projects.
No questions. But Gordon did raise one other quick question. Is there a nice, short document that spells out costs and income expectations in one nice, neat, short page or two document, rather than spread over long reports with many, many words and lots to try and wade through?
Through the chair, I think that's good feedback. I can take that away and see if we can do that. What we've tried to do is to say, here's the cost of construction, $8 million. Here's how to pay for it, $5.4 billion. Here's the outcome from the operations. And we thought that that would work, but we'll take that offline and see if we can find another way.
Yeah, that's awfully quick.
Thank you.
That's a little too quick for me. I'm sort of looking for something in between, but anyway, thank you.
Councilor Fuller?
And this is on that same question. I get really tired of people wanting us to come up with amounts. What we can come up with is estimated amounts. We cannot come up with actual amounts. Those, what we come up with could be more, it could be less, but it's an estimated amount, it's not the actual amount. There's just absolutely no way you can predict the actual amount. You can only predict an estimate.
I'm going to just follow in on that, because this is a good discussion. One of the criticisms is that we're not, we didn't release a business case. Well, Stafford did do a business case, it was in the public domain for us. What we did was do an assessment of that and all of the other reports that related to it. And E and Y gave us that assessment and gave us recommendations. And the reason why we haven't released that is those recommendations relate to our mandate for negotiating. If there's a yes vote, we need to negotiate an agreement with the WHL, the new ownership team, about a facility lease and license agreement. We can't publish what our ranges are and our estimations and go in and be in a negotiating position. So, that type of information's not being released because we simply don't do that, nobody, no city would do that. The other agreement that we have to negotiate is an operating agreement. The person, the company that's going to run the event center. Again, E and Y gave us ranges, gave us data. We shared what we could, but we cannot be sharing our negotiating position before we even get to the table to negotiate. So, we shared what we could and shared with a degree of due diligence and sort of risk profiles, but the rest won't be released. It never is, and it won't be, because it's confidential for a reason, commercially sensitive, and it is the mandate for the city to achieve the business case that Mr. Memmo published. And the city is of Nanaimo's business case, basically taking all, two feet, two and a half feet worth of documentation, distilling it down to, here's the due diligence process the city's following, here's the things that we've looked at, here's the ranges that we've accepted, and here's how we're going to approach the feasibility study. And all of it does have risk mitigation, it does have ranges, and yet some stuff simply just stays confidential. The reality of entering into commercial associations with the WHL team for a 20-year lease, that's what happens when you bring in operators to operate your facility.
I quite agree with Gordon that estimates are estimates, and not going to be fixed figures, but there are better estimates and worse estimates. And those are made up of things that I think you've tried to cover here. I don't think you're getting that message, you're trying to... Complete enough to warrant this. And we do have to remember any negotiations after the, if this passes, they know what our hand is. We don't know what theirs is, you have to take what ours is. And that's, I think, the other thing we want.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Story?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one quick question and a bit of a suggestion. Would the council entertain inviting the Canadian Construction Association into a one- or two-day seminar on the various forms of construction contracts? The ultimate decision is made at this board table, and you're going to be spending a lot of money over the next two years. And right now, I'm not sure if everybody on council fully understands the contractual methods of construction. It might be worth it for one day. It's just my question, thank you.
Another excellent recommendation by Mr. Story. If there is a yes vote, Colliers has prepared a presentation on the various options for design bill, design big bill. There's five different models that they've taken a look at, and that'll be shared with council.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions you may make, Galley?
Motion for the board cameras?
Okay, thank you.
I made a...
Councilor Fuller, will you take over the chair on the...